If you can find somebody, can.
Come on in.
Excuse me, then I still have to do.
I think it is either.
The right other item. Okay.
We've got meetings.
Okay.
What about the COVID?
I'd like to call the, um, I'd like to call back to order the Board of County Commissioners for December 5th, and we're here and ready to go. There's a little change in the program. We're going to do the issue with the fire first, and then we will go to the city of Newport Ritchie, and then we'll start regular public hearings after that. So remember, you've seen a lot of these items, Board. You've seen a lot of them. If you've got new questions to ask and new things you want to bring up, that's fine, but don't carry it too far that we don't get through on time. So we got a lot, lot to do, and we've seen these items several times. Okay? All right, Mr. Murphy.
All right. Good afternoon. Believe it or not, one year ago, I was hired as your Assistant County Administrator for Public Safety. Little did I know what stood in front of me. With Mike's unwavering support, we tackled significant morale issues, a two-year mass exodus of fire personnel, recruiting challenges, internal fiscal challenges, and a leadership change. Today, I stand unified with our lead negotiator, our HR Director Barbara Hitzman, our Assistant Fire Chief Ryan Gwynn, and the IFF Union President John Michael, representing the county administration, the fire administration, and the union. We're presenting a three-year contract reflective of our explosive growth community. There are many highlights in this contract. The substantive points in the first two years being salaries in line with the area market. The third year brings in the transformational move to a D-shift. The contract in the D-shift will allow us to address many items, including recruiting and retention, employee health and wellness, positive management initiatives, three-year cost certainty for the county and the employees. This collaborative effort led to a favorable vote of over 80% of the union members. On behalf of Chief Perez, I would like to introduce Assistant Fire Chief Ryan Gwynn to go over our presentation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. So as you're well aware, the explosive growth that we've had over the last few years, actually within the last decade in Pasco County, has increased our work stress environment that we have with our men and women in Pasco County Fire Rescue. Since 2020, if we continue pace like we are as of this morning, we're looking at close to a 30% increase in call volume just since the last three years. That's really put a toll on our men and women because of some of the retention issues. We're working, fire service has kind of changed over the last, you know, decade or so. We're, we're working 24 hours nonstop, not to mention we're working overtime more and more and more. We're having difficulties keeping people in the seats, and it's really elevated our, uh, issues within fire rescue. One of the major things that we're focusing on is the mental health. As you can see, um, our own Rob Chalmers during his doctoral studies did an internal study of just fire rescue employees and, um, the Corrections Institute. Out of all those employees that he studied, 44.5% have either sought or considered treatment for depression, 40% have either sought or considered treatment for anxiety, 37.7 have sought or considered treatment for post-stress, for PTSD. More than that, almost a full percent of them have sought or considered treatment for suicide. So some of the contributing factors to that, of course, are the long work hours, the sleep deprivation, the mandatory overtime, the high-stress work environment. As you know, we don't need to go over to, we don't need to readdress what kind of calls the men and women are running every day. Some of the most horrific things that we could see, especially over a 30-year career. We've had some previous barriers to some of the mental health, um, treatments that we need, and also, um, you know, some of the other drivers. We're currently working 2704 hours. So if you guys came to work every day, just a 40-hour work, 40-hour work week all week long, our men and women currently are working about an extra three and a half months more than you guys are. We're trying to bring that balance down a little more relative to where they, to where they need to be. That's where the D-shift comes in. So in FY '26, we're going to reduce that down to 2184 from 2704, which is a very significant reduction in work hours. There's hoping that balance is going to allow us to level out the stress versus, you know, mental preparedness, uh, um, reset, and then that transitions, of course, from a 56-hour work week down to a 42-hour work week. So we've done a little bit of give and take with this contract, of course. We're, we're eliminating some of the excesses that cause some of the overtime, some of the internal problems. We went through, reset, and fixed some of those issues. You know, over the last year, we've spent a significant amount of money, as you can see, on overtime itself. We're hoping to eliminate that drastically. And of course, the other issue is, is employee retention. We've been kind of the training ground for other departments around us. We've spent millions and millions of dollars training, educating, equipping, and mentoring employees just to turn around and watch them leave. We've hired a lot of people over the last couple of years, but we've almost lost just as many as we've hired. So we're looking to reset that, and that's what this contract's going to do. And in all honesty, um, this contract, you know, it's, it's a, it's a commitment from all of you. All five of you have continuously committed to, um, support fire rescue and public safety. It goes to show how much you care about the men and women of Pasco County Fire Rescue. It also goes to show how much you care about the safety of your citizens of Pasco County. And this contract and your vote, you know, goes a long way to show how much you do support everybody within this organization. So any questions?
I got one question.
Okay, Gary.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
How did you get a union president to agree to that? So whatever magic you use, I want some of it in my office. Just want to let you know.
It's, it's been a long, year-long process, and it's not just, unfortunately, not just all of us standing up there. I mean, Amy Lee and Mindy and her team in the back, and obviously under the direction of, uh, Mike Carbala, we've been fighting through this.
And an 80% approval rate, that's.
80%.
That's just unheard of.
Mm-hmm. And the magic is, is the fight was to get this done, you know, fiscally responsible to where it was as least of an impact to the citizens as we could possibly make this. But this contract is essentially going to make Pasco County Fire Rescue the premier fire department within the state of Florida.
That's great.
It is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Am I asked?
Well, I, I would just say, um, thank, thank you, all of you, for working together, and our county administrator, and our new fire chief. I was telling someone the other day, I don't think I've ever really driven far in the county and not seen our, uh, fire rescue out on the road. It's crazy.
Yes, ma'am.
Crazy. Um, so, um, I'm looking forward to hiring more, and, and I'm just really grateful for all of you and that we've got this good con, contract going forward.
And on behalf, um, behalf of Fire Chief Tony Perez, who would love nothing more than to be here, trust me, but, um, he appreciates all the support you guys have given as well. So I believe, uh, the local president, John Michael, would like to say something.
Okay.
I must, it'll be, it'll be quick. But thank you to Mr. Murphy, Director Hitzman, Chief Gwynn, of course, Chief Perez and his predecessor, Chief Kassen, uh, for their understanding and, and collaboration. Uh, this forward-looking approach will propel our agency to the forefront and make Pasco County Fire Rescue an employment destination in the years to come. I'd like to recognize my negotiating team members for their tireless efforts over the last year. I owe them all the credit for making sure that we navigated this process with the best interests of our members as the top priority. They are my two vice presidents, Kyle Patton and J.J. Martinez, local secretary Sabrina Kobler, and District 5 station rep Paul Totten. Without them, none of this would have been possible. As we travel the state, we're fielding an overwhelming amount of interest to what we're doing here in Pasco County, and we're super proud to share our accomplishments. Of course, none of this would be possible without the support of the board, and for that, we're extremely grateful. Again, by your affirmative ratification, you are putting your firefighters first and sending the very clear message that you take an effective and efficient public safety enterprise seriously. It was a long summer, but I'm excited to stand before you today to take part in this presentation, providing the highlights of a collective bargaining, bargaining agreement that propels Pasco County towards becoming Florida's premier county and puts people first. And once again, thank you in advance for your support of the courageous men and women of Pasco County Fire Rescue.
Mr. Mariano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say to the team, to our firefighters, negotiating team, et cetera, thanks for working together. We told you from the get-go, as we heard your problems, it took time to get to where we're at right now, but as far as getting the fire stations built, listening to what we can do for scheduling, looking what we do to make it a better life for all your people, helping them get themselves the protection they want, the help they need, this board has never wavered from any board I've served on. And with the extreme growth and COVID kind of slowed us down a little bit from getting stuff done, but I want to say the new leadership, working with what's going, what's going together, made this happen, because this has been, similar things have been talked about before, how we can make this work better, but you guys brought it to fruition. You, you listened, you made it happen, and creatively bringing this all together is amazing. So, Mr. Carbala, I want to thank you again for bringing the right people together in the teams.
It's great team effort here. I can't say it enough, so thank you guys.
Can I just, uh, close with, uh, for years, governments have asked public safety employees to do more with less. By your actions today, you'll be able to do more with more, and that's the definition of a premier county.
Yeah.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you for that. I'd like to say I thank you for working together with our team and your team. We're all the same team, when you get right down to it. So we all work as a team throughout the county, and we want the best for our firefighters and EMS and everyone involved in the county, no matter what their job is. So I certainly appreciate what y'all are doing and coming together with this proposal and doing this is the right thing for being a premier county, so.
Yep. Okay, with that, um.
Move to approve the contract.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, like so? There's five, zero passes. Okay? Great job. Let's, uh, I believe we need to take a picture. Come back, guys. If y'all will stay up here, and I'll go down below. Mr. Carbala, come up.
Sure. Where's Ryan? Bernie Rader.
All right.
Oh, Ryan. Oh, Ryan.
Commissioner, I sent you the complaint, and thank you.
That's coming up.
Is anybody going to yell at J.J. for being too tall?
Yeah, Commissioner Wharton, I like to switch spots.
I got it going on here between me and Seth, so. I think mine's worse than yours.
You guys split, split up in red, guys. Split up in red. Thank you so much.
Great job.
My pleasure.
Exciting. How long will it take to implement? Hey, yeah. Good job.
Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Now, we're going to move to, um, I believe we're going to take.
Newport Ritchie.
R-65 first, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sonya, can I get R-65 up, please? Chairman, members of the board, Mike Carbala, county administrator. R-65 is a, is really a joint initiative to help the city of Newport Ritchie and, and county, to, to a certain extent, to redevelop a blighted area. Uh, we, we refer to it as, as the town and country area, uh, but it's more of a funding partnership. And so item R-65 is, is codifies, or an inter-local agreement, a, a funding initiative to, to assist with this. So the county is agreeing to put up $2 million of, of county general funds as a contribution towards water and sewer infrastructure in the area. Uh, in the past, you may have recalled that there were Habitat for Humanity lots that were going up for sale, and part of the, part of the issue with developing the area was there were no utilities. There were also some stormwater and, and other infrastructure issues. So in return, the city would not only, um, annex the areas, take and assume control of the roads, but they would also contribute, uh, at least one and a half million dollars towards other infrastructure improvements, such as roads, stormwaters, trees, streetlights, I think even some, some park facilities in there. Uh, so during the fiscal year '23 budget discussions and, and starting back to a joint city-county workshop, uh, the, the county commission put $2 million into the FY '23 budget as a contribution to, to this effort. And so what's before you today are two inter-local agreements, and the first, which is R-65, and I would like for you to, to take that action first, because if you, if that doesn't go forward, then in which case I would ask to withdraw R-64, because the, the city would probably not annex without the contribution. I'll, I'll let them speak to that, of course, um, if I'm wrong on that. So we brought that to the board on September 19th. Uh, the board subsequently had a lot of discussion about it. There were some questions on funding, other funding sources. Uh, I know there were some meetings that were requested with, with the city and board members, and so, um, we were asked to bring it back to 12-5. And so that's what we're doing with that. This is just a quick visual aid, so you can see where the area is. The areas highlighted in yellow are, uh, city of Newport Ritchie, city limits. These are in the city of Newport Ritchie. The area highlighted in red is the subject area, and so it would include the roads, the properties in there would be annexed into the city, and the county would make a contribution of $2 million, uh, under the current situation, to, um, to fund infrastructure improvements and, uh, mainly water and sewer. And with that, um, that's really all I have in terms of formal discussion on it I can bring. I'd like to bring up the city manager, Debbie Manns, who could probably tell you a little more detail, uh, Mr. Chair, about what, what they intend to do with the area.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I don't travel alone. I brought with me the mayor, the deputy mayor, and Councilman Peters to represent this agenda item, um, this afternoon, in large part driven by the fact that this is a very important project to the city of Newport Ritchie, in spite of the fact that it is property that is located in the county. It is, as was indicated by the county administrator, an enclave which represents 185 residential lots, basically a four-block area. If you don't think you're spending money on the property now, you are. You have ordinance-related issues which may or may not be being addressed, um, but you do generate, on an average, 850 calls per year between your police and your fire service for a four-block area, 185 lots. This is more than an eyesore. This is an area that has been allowed to deteriorate to a condition that it just defies human habitation. The city is committed, and we stand before you today, as a committed community in our civil responsibility. And when we started having discussions about this problem, that was 2018. It is now 2023, and the only thing we have is further deterioration. At that time, the city was committed to spending 1.5 million. We no longer can achieve what we obligated to do for 1.5 million. We know it will cost us more. We know the sanitary sewer that you committed to fund will no longer cost $2 million, just because of the escalation of costs that have ensued over the last few years. We are willing, and stand before you, willing to make that additional investment, because the water table is so high there. There's no, no possible means by which to establish appropriate housing in that area without the benefit of the establishment of appropriate infrastructure. That's the first step, and we believe it needs to be tended to. Um, with that, I'll allow the elected officials, if they have words, um, to add them to my plea to you for your consideration to go forward with the partnership that I believe was negotiated in good faith, and allow you to join me in our responsibility for civic
Chopper Davis. I just want to add one thing that is that only if you know or in the know, do you know that this is not in the city? Because it's so surrounded by, um, the city in itself, everybody says, why don't you take care of it? Why don't you take care of it? And they've said that for years to me, and I have to explain the situation. Um, this is just one of the areas that we have, but this is a real important area to straighten up, also with all the commercial in, in that area. So we're looking for your support. Like we said, it'll probably cost us at least $2 million when it's all said and done, maybe even more.
Okay.
So, um, good afternoon. It's Mike Peters. Um, this, this area of the, of the city is, as you saw from the map, is on toward the westernmost portion of our city, but it, it does lie in a strategic area around, um, it's just, just north of the Southgate Shopping Center, which is one of our largest taxpayers. And, um, the, the, that area has, and just the nature of the area and the nature of folks it attracts, you know, that filter, they filter in and out some of the commercial properties there that has caused the city to, to pay closer attention on policing and other activities to, to make our, our residents and the visitors there, the shopping centers and the other commercial areas, uh, safe. And, um, it's, it just, you know, as you know, we have a large CRA area in the cities. It's, it's the bulk of the city, and, um, and we're trying to redevelop and improve various parts of the city, but, but this, and you say, well, why would we take this one area on, right? Well, it's not in the city. We just think it is such a level that needs to be brought up that, uh, you know, you tackle the worst first, right? And, um, we think that this is a, a great opportunity for you to partner with us. I know it's always, it's always about the money, right? Where are you going to find the money? Well, in, in this case, you know, you have an opportunity to, to get this property taken care of for half the cost and, and with, with, without the, um, the expenditure and not have to follow through and watch it and get it done and monitor it and work it through it. We're willing to take that on, um, as we think it's such, such important. So we appreciate your consideration, greatly appreciate the, the strong working relationship your, your administrator and your former administrator has with our city manager on this project, and we, we greatly appreciate, uh, your consideration.
If you'll allow me, Mr. Chairman, I have one additional comment. I did take note of the fact that in your agenda, the effective date of the agreement is noted as October 1st, 2023. If you determine that it's appropriate to go forward with an agreement, the effective date should be October 1st of 2024.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Matt?
And finally, uh, thank you, Commissioners. Um, this is, this is a win-win for both the citizens of Newport Ritchie and Pasco County. This is an area that's been blighted for a very long time, as you know, um, and we really would like your help in, uh, putting this together and revitalizing the area. As you know, it does butt up to US 19-2, which we talk a lot about revitalizing that area. area, so this would be part of it also. So, like I said, we'd appreciate your consideration, and we look forward to working with you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mariano?
Got a few questions.
Okay.
What percentage of the city is on the CRA?
Actually, probably between eighty-five and ninety percent of the city is designated as blighted.
Okay. And when you say a good-faith agreement you had with a previous administrator, two things happened in negotiations with that. When Habitat first, actually, before even Habitat was there, we had like all sorts of code violations, et cetera.
Right.
So, a couple of landowners that came to me, actually met in Cracker Barrel and talked about, "You got to get code enforcement off our backs." And I says, "Well, there's nothing I can do about code enforcement. You got to meet the code, or they're going to keep on coming after you." I says, "You may want to reach out," actually, I reached out to Kobus Alagren from Habitat, and I said, "Kobus, you might want to go talk to these folks. Maybe they want to sell. Maybe we can do some type of redevelopment project." Kobus went in there, bought seventy-one, got the rights to buy seventy-one parcels, of which the county commission stepped up. Because it's such a low-level area, floods out, you got to raise up the structures that we did build out there, they had to go try to work something out. We couldn't do CDBG funding, because it wouldn't work for affordable housing because of the elevation. I said from the get-go, what we need to do in that whole property, all the way from Cracker Barrel all the way up, is we got to raise the structure, raise the land up. We actually had to bring, we brought in, I think, eight truckloads of fill from Timber Oaks to come in there, just to build those four houses on the back of Van Doran. By the way, the agenda says a couple of different names. It's Van Doran on the road. So, we did all that, took a look. And there was one time we had a meeting. We had Habitat was there, Debbie Manns was there, her former city councilperson was there, we had USA Water that was there, US Water was there, and they, US Water had agreed to do the engineering for us, no charge. Did that in the Gulf Harbors meeting, Woodlands meeting we had, said he'd do the same thing. I asked Debbie and the councilmen if they would go to the Board and see if they would waive the impact fees, because part of the 1.9 million dollar number was their impact fees to reimburse the sewer. I says, "Well, are we going to go spend 1.9 million dollars, and 300 is going to go into your pocket for the facility?" Now, it kind of like broke down from there. Nothing much happened from there, other than we cleaned it out probably one more time. And a lot of those people that we cleaned out, and I think the calls, we'll talk about that, but the calls have gone way down. A lot of those people down at Olzner now, and you've probably seen emails about Greenkey, et cetera, from one of our very prominent people, and they've moved down there, and city's battling to try to get rid of them now. So, it kicks the can down the road a little bit. But one of their commissioners, councilmen, mentioned the meeting, and it makes a lot of sense to me. When we have a developer coming in, right? We have the developer build the infrastructure to us, infrastructure for us, and they give it to our water system and sewer system. Their system that's sitting there has been sitting there for a while. They could have extended for many, many years, right? It's their service area. They could have extended that pipe out. They decided not to. Why? You'd have to go to a previous council to go figure it out. But it's their service area. We protect our enterprise. We don't spend money outside our enterprise, and the enterprise got to reimburse the way it's all bonded out. Why, and this is asked by their councilmen, why would we expect the county to pay for our service area? Why would we do that? We should do that. We should put the charges in, get collected, reimburse. I'm adding this in now. They should be collecting their fees they need to collect to go put the sewer in. Why are we doing it? Now, the other thing is, way back when, when we had some elected officials from the State House, matter of fact, the Appropriations Chair, there now, we talked about, "Let's go ask for money. Let's go get septic to sewer." And also, right now, resiliency money, because if you just go put the sewer lines in there, you got these elevated homes, you can have the homes like Habitat right now, they got the homes that are out there, on one good flood, one good rain, the yards have flooded out, the kids can't even play in the yards. So, do I really want to go do it this way and just go put the sewer lines in? You're still not going to solve the problem. But again, it's their service area. They could have done it, they should have done it. Why are we spending our money? If you want to spend some to help the city out, I say, "Let's go and spend the money like we talked about, Greenkey. The road's in horrible shape. It takes them out to the county park. It'll improve that road. They approved two boat ramps that you can't get to, and you have issues parking up and down." If you want to help the city out, let's go that way, because it's a county benefit. This here is their service area and their enterprise. It doesn't make sense why we do it.
Mr. Stark?
So, this is not my district, but it is my neighborhood, since I live in Gulf Harbors, and I shop at this Publix all the time, and I see what this very, very blighted area does to the community. The Publix has, and these stores have to hire security guards to keep the drug deals from going down in the parking lot. And I recall, I don't know, are we in the hundreds of drug overdoses that have happened on these streets?
Actually, we have the manager from the Southgate Shopping Center in attendance, if you'd care for him to speak.
Yeah, I would. So, I think that we have an opportunity here to partner with the city to clean up the most blighted area in that area, and it's a good deal. And, you know, at first, I was upset, and I think Jack was too, in Habitat, you know, they offered us back our lots, and we didn't take it. I would have taken them, so they sold them. But at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter to me who is building the new homes in this community. I will say one thing, I would put a restriction, no trailers. It has to be homes that lift up the community. But I would ask our staff, how much would it, is it, how much does a new road cost per mile? I mean, I think if we came in here when we do our PVAS, our new program, and we pay for those roads to be fixed, because they're some of the worst in the county, those roads, they, if we go by a criteria of, you know, how bad the road is, these are going to be right up there. So, how much is a road to redo a road? Because this is going to be full-depth reclamation. So, it's kind of a wash, in a way. We're giving $2 million to put in, that's going to put in the infrastructure, right? The water and sewer? And then, they're going to pay for the roads to get fixed. So, this way, it's $2 million either getting the roads fixed, or $2 million getting the water utilities in, and you start to clean up a neighborhood. So...
Mr. Chairman?
You know, be careful, and I would love to hear from the Southgate manager, who also lives there. And I know Debbie lives there, too, in the area, so...
Just a minute. So, are y'all going to, if we do this, are y'all going to build that land up?
Yes, that is part of the plan.
That's part of the plan?
It would have to be built up, as Commissioner Mariano indicated.
I would also say that, in talking to septic to sewer, well, we're going to be put, this is going to come off the septic, right?
Yes.
Yes. I think that's a good thing, because there's, this is polluting the water around it when it rains heavy, so, and the bayou there. And while you're looking at that map, I hope one day, we're going to be talking about, pretty soon, this waste, this water treatment facility, because that's got to get out of there, too. But anyway, I...
Mr. Mariano?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, to go back to years ago, when I first got elected, that place did flood all the time. The road from the Southgate Plaza going up was Calan Cave. All the water would sit in there. When the water would finally build out, it would flood. There was a Marine that used to come in all the time, and God bless him, he passed away. But he lived in one of the homes, and he would get flooded all the time, under his house, under the trailer, mold, whatever. I mean, it was just a sad, sad thing. So, when I say, health-wise, it's not good. We worked to do our road. We paved the road all the way from the Southgate all the way up to Gulf Drive. We cleaned out the ditch, and by making the road pitched, the road went into the ditch, it went up. We then worked with the city. City was great bringing it all the way down to Van Doran. It gets stuck there, and then we had to go work the condos, apartments across the way to get them to participate, and then we finished it off. Tropical Storm Debbie, I think that's when Little Fifty-four and Little went out, like the water went under. That same storm, I was down there that night, because I used to have a loop going all the way down, that road was dry as a bone. That neighborhood was dry as a bone. That water flows out. So, the water, you can make it flow. The flooding is not the big issue, other than the land, as you just mentioned, I'm glad you mentioned. If you sit it down low, and it needs to go up five feet, it's a lot of fill. Frankly, if we could have set this up way ahead of time, and kind of worked something together, there's a lot of fill at Timber Oaks that we could probably use, that we did use, that may be applicable to, you know, be a very low source rather than the trucking to get it down there, to raise it all up. But if you don't raise it up, you create a slum. Now, wastewater treatment plant, they wanted to, they applied to increase the amount of sewage that they could actually dump into the cross bayou. I've got many calls from the cross bayou people that smell the sewage water going in there. I've seen reports where the water goes in there, and it's killed the fish from around there, and the wildlife that's in the water. So, to put more residential development on their sewer system, which can't handle it now, and you heard Kelly Mothershed came before us at our workshop meeting, that she would like to help on that. If you really want to make this project go and be the best way to spend the public dollar, go get resiliency money, go get septic to sewer money. It's out there. You heard Wilton Simpson talk about it. We went to see him. That money's out there. Why go spend the money, our own money, when we can go get the federal money or the state money? Let's do that first and improve it. Let's get the groundwork set, and then we can go work on improving it. But right now, to go just build out this service here, it doesn't make sense.
Mr. Oakley, with all due respect, if you'd allow me to respond, I'm willing to host a discussion about the wastewater treatment plant at any time. I'm not certain, perhaps, that now is the best time, but I do know that we did not apply to expand the amount of discharge into the bayou. That is not factual information. I will, though, at any point, talk about the wastewater treatment plant and our future plans for that facility. The, but we do have appropriate capacity to handle the development and the redevelopment of the Town and Country Villas area, formerly referred to as the Leisure Lane Van Doran area, and even more residential development in that area. We've had all of our calculations done by the engineers, and we're certain of that fact. So, to represent something different than that is just not true.
Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. Maybe to make, I guess it could be a tradition in the agreement, to Commissioner Mariano's points about applying, Commissioner Stark agrees to this stuff quite often, about applying for funds for whether it be septic to sewer, Restore Act funds, what have you, is that we have a condition that the city, maybe we can use our county's grant department, and, you know, as a partnership. If we approve the money today, but then, we need, you know, we see measurable applications for grant funding. If we capture that funding, then that's just money that, you know, we could bring back to the county and not spend, to kind of offset dollar-for-dollar, but we kick it off with a $2 million base, and we know it's there, and then try to capture federal money or state money that might be out there. It could be a good exercise for our newly-formed grant-writing department and working with the city. But something needs to happen here to Commissioner Stark's points, but if there's an ability to capture money that our taxpayers have already spent, we bring it here, we don't have to spend our full $2 million. I think that's a win, just a thought.
Well, there would be at least a year of time to apply for the grant, and so, you know, I personally think it's important for us, when we negotiate, we do a deal with the city, any city, that we shouldn't back out of it. There are so many positives to cleaning up this neighborhood, and I say again, in my opinion, it's a bit of a wash, because now they're going to be responsible to build, fix those roads, not us. And this is, you heard the community member come, who lives around there, and I'd like to hear from the Publix manager, or Southgate manager, whichever, that, I'm just wondering, is this the worst neighborhood in your city? Is this the slum of your city?
It is.
Yeah.
We are subject as a form of, it's a negative deterrent to our economic growth, but it's county property. It just happens to be surrounded by city property.
Right, it's not in your city, right. But as the one councilman was saying, residents don't really realize that.
They don't realize that, and our number-one taxpayer in the city is the Southgate Shopping Center.
So, is it okay if we hear from the businessman?
Is it also part of the, part of the ask, is that land going to be built up?
It is, yes.
So, that's part of that $2 million?
Do you want to mention, so, we're going to put in some of the infrastructure, and you want to mention what you're going to be putting in?
Certainly.
Just to go over that again? Yeah.
As part of the city's commitment to the project, we would be establishing that the sewer impact fees would be waived for the parcels that will be redeveloped. We'd establish a sidewalk system. We would install a roadway system, streetlights, neighborhood park, and stormwater improvements.
And does that include houses built at a certain elevation?
Yes, it does. And that would be, yes.
And can we, is it legal? And do we have the ability to say no mobile homes?
We are passing an ordinance in the city where that would be precluded from being built.
Okay.
For that zoning classification.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, Debbie, why haven't you guys applied for a septic sewer grant or a resiliency grant?
We have applied for a grant. We were denied for the grant, but we've only applied for one grant. And right now, you're the owner of the property, and you'll continue to be the owner of the property until October of 24, so we're hopeful that maybe we can work with you, and you'll apply for some grants before the city takes over the property, if that's the wishes of the group.
But as your service area, wouldn't it be under your realm to go after a grant for the septic to sewer?
We probably could have went on it together.
Well, what do you say we do that now?
Absolutely. That's the best thing to do.
All right, and so, on this Exhibit C we have in front of us, it says, "Total Cost of Impact Fees To Be Charged or To Be Forgiven." So, we can say that the fees will be forgiven?
That's correct.
And to what elevation to build the homes to? Is it going to be ground level? Are they going to have to elevate it up?
It's going to, they'll be elevated up.
Because that's the law. I mean, it's in, I mean, it's a FEMA rule, so...
And again, you've elevated it up, when the waters come in, like, as you see right along here, that water that's right there is in the yards. It's so low that one good rain, the kids don't have a place to go play. You elevate the house up, the house is safe.
Well, they're going to put it in a park?
Be thirteen feet minimum.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a question of elevating the house to be safe, it's elevating the ground.
Are we going?
If you have the, if it's on the low ground, they flood out.
Does it include the ground being raised also?
It will, yeah.
In this agreement?
How high?
Yeah, Jack, most of Gulf Harbors is at six to eight feet, so, I mean, and that's a very desirable place to live. The houses have to be, any new house, the bottom floor has to be about thirteen, but my elevation is, my new lot is 8.5, and it's not precluding me from building a house on there. So, my pool, you know, I've never had water in my pool. I've never had the storm come up to my yard yet. So, you know, that happens, but, exactly, but it's very important they get, they quickly get off of the septic, in my opinion, and we clean up that neighborhood. Can we hear from the Southgate manager?
Yes, we can.
Certainly, you've got things to work out, there's no question. My name is Jim Hanson. I'm the regional project manager for Wilbright Development. We are the managing partner at Southgate Shopping Center. It was interesting, and it won't take too much time. I hear a lot of conversation here that I would love to be in the middle of, but, no, thank you. When I did due diligence on this property before we purchased it, it was very interesting and entertaining, so to say, on a negative side. First, let me tell you, I'm an ex-cop, and I look at things a lot differently when I look at properties. First, let me tell you, I'm an ex-cop, and I look at things a lot differently when I look at properties. And this kind of bothered me a little bit, because as you say, you know, you, you see things going on, and we saw it. And we can't control it. We didn't know where it was coming from until after we bought it. And we watched it. We hired the police department. We hired security. We spent a lot of money. We spent a lot of money every year for that purpose, to help reduce, if we can, some of the people that come there. I can certainly tell you that the police departments have, have been great. The cops are great over there. Everybody that responds is very good to work with. But you can't always catch people. And it wasn't too long ago, following up on what you said, is that I'm out there flying a drone, taking pictures for our partners, and I'm watching a young lady on a motorbike, driving from the leisure area, we'll call it, into the parking lot, over to the bank. Basket had something in it. Went back, it was empty. It happened four or five times, and I called security, and they said, yeah, we've been watching her. Apparently after, a short time afterwards, and it doesn't really need to get into it, he got a hold of the police department. They talked about it. I believe the police department or the sheriff's department, I don't know who did it, and arrested some people. But they're still here. When Publix has to increase their security, TJ Maxx has, Burlington Code has, it's difficult, you know, for them to say, hey, geez, what are you guys doing about it? Well, the police department can only do so much. There's only so much anybody can do. You have a start and a finish, no matter what we do. We started here at the shopping center. Fortunately, we worked with Debbie Mans and her team to make sure we improved the center, trying to follow the guidelines that they do their improvement on 19. And, you know, we still see that exposure. We hate to see it to the customers that are coming in there that aren't happy with it. And they mention it, and they talk about it. As you probably heard, I know that Debbie Mans has heard. So it is difficult. I, I can tell you that. And I hope that something can be resolved, because like I say, you got to start. If you don't start, you'll never get to the end, and it'll never change. And flooding, listen, we have other centers that I work at that experience flooding. Maybe lucky this year, might be lucky for the next five years, but you may end up having water in your pool someday. There's nothing you can do about it.
Better my pool than my house.
There you go. So I don't know what else I can add. I know that everybody's trying, and it's a tough area. My property manager won't go down that street anymore.
I'm not supposed to, but I still do.
Well, we do, because, listen, we want to try to figure out what's going on. Because I have partners that, not my partners, I don't own it. We have to answer the people. We have to try to explain what's happening. And I know that Debbie Mans has talked with our Executive Vice President. They've been helpful. They try to work. But him here to, you know, tell you what Debbie's saying or what you're saying, and everybody knows, a start and a finish. Till you start it, you can't finish it. The problem won't go away.
Yeah, and we have some new families that have moved in on those habitat homes, and they're on their way to self-sufficiency, you know, building equity in their new home. But then your neighbors, you know, they have the sofas out in front, and they're passed out on drugs. Or, or their, their trailer's burning down because they had a lab in it or something, so.
Well, just to give you this last one, is that we had to call the police department not too long ago, because there was a young lady that was holding on to a column with an ankle bracelet, having withdrawals. True story. The very next day.
I think I could make a motion? I would move to approve the deal.
Mr. Chair? I'm an ex-cop, too.
Good for you. Thank you.
I know exactly what you're talking about. But, so let's get this done.
Thank you. So I want to make sure we capture in the motion, there's two, there's two motions that have to occur, right? So let me ask the county attorney, where is it appropriate to add the additions that we talked about? You know, one, I want to be sure we don't put mobile homes. Mobile homes are excluded, which they're going to put in their ordinance. But until, until it gets to them, it's on us, I think. We have a year to protect ourselves. And the other is to work together towards applying for grants for septic to sewer.
So you have executed interlocal agreements. If you wish to modify the interlocal agreements and send them back to the city for signature, I would say that we can craft language in the neighbor, neighborhood improvements in our local agreement to, to add language about, to try and add language that indicates that this $2 million would not supplant further grants. As for the, as for the mobile home issue, that would be more appropriate in the annexation agreement.
That's the second one?
That's the second one.
Okay. So what he said. So I, I move to approve R-64 with the, R-65 with the agreement that we will work on a, we'll try for a grant for septic to sewer.
No, for, for 60,
That's 64.
Yes, you're right. For 60, 65, it would be that the county and the, and the city will cooperate to apply for a septic sewer grant in advance of the $2 million payment.
Okay, so that's my first motion. Then I'll make a motion on the annexation. Okay.
We have four seconds.
What, what discussion?
Someone seconded?
Yeah, we have.
They want to second it.
Gary seconded it, okay.
Oh, Gary seconded it. So I got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
What discussion?
Discussion?
Just one quick mention. So I, I talked about a report that was done. This is done by the City of Newport Ritchie Service Water Discharge Study, One Year Summer Report, July 2020. Are you familiar with that report?
I don't know what report you have now. I do not.
I, I don't think that's relevant to this.
Oh, it is.
From 1921?
I, I remember that. There was treated, there was a couple of times when treated water was...
Yes, true.
They were, I think they were up.
Okay, so I want, I want everyone to get a copy of this here. Someone's looking back to us, you'll see it. And I want staff to take a look at it. David L, are you familiar with this report?
I'm sure I read the report in '21.
There's a couple of things that have improved at that water treatment facility. So one was when we, so Gulf Harbors goes, you know, we're, we're 50% in that facility, or 45% or something.
49%.
49% in that water treatment facility. Gulf Harbors was having a lot of saltwater intrusion into our utility system, and was really causing a big problem in that facility. So I was able to secure millions of dollars from the legislature, and they came in and they sleeved all the pipes, I think we're done, sleeved all the pipes in Gulf Harbors, which has greatly improved the functioning ability of that water treatment facility. And, and that, part of the reason they had to let water out was all this saltwater that was swamping them. So, so that, that has made improvements in that facility and given them more capacity. I still think we need to move that off. But that doesn't mean we need a moratorium of growth in the, in the, in that area, in my opinion. Which is kind of what you're saying, don't add any more business to the facility, which is ours as well?
I'm saying we should fix what we have. I'm, I'm saying we should go, I mean, I think if, if you're going to make a motion about septic sewers, you should do one for the wastewater treatment plant, too. We should be going after that, those funds.
And I, I think that is part, I've, I've had this discussion with the administrator, and I think that is one of the big, big, I think they're already working on it, talking about it, is another great project to work on together, is moving that, that off of the water. And I, I think that'll be a slam dunk.
We're working on the study now.
Yeah. So.
Now's the time to do it.
Yeah.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like so?
Okay, on R-60,
Motion passed.
On R-65 and the annex,
From 64.
Oh, force. I don't know how I have it backwards. In the annex agreement, I move that we restrict, restrict the ability to put...
Move to approve the annex, the interlocal agreement on annexation, adding an additional paragraph which the city commits that it will take rezoning efforts to prohibit mobile homes in this area.
Okay.
And changing the effective date to October 2024.
And the change the effective date to October 1 of '24.
What about elevations?
Well, they have to. That's the FEMA code.
That just raises the structure. I'm talking about the ground.
I don't know, I don't know what the law is on raising the, filling the land. I think that's a swift, is that a swift flood permit? I, that's not as important to me as, as to you. Like I said, my, my house is at, my lot is at 8.5 in Gulf Harbors. My new one, my current one's at 6.5, so above elevation. What are these?
We have not done any topography yet on the site, so I can't.
But you can't raise those lots up to 13.
No, they're probably about seven, though. Maybe six.
Well, I would think the builder would want to do that. I don't know, I don't know how we pick a number today of what you have to raise your lot to. Yeah, they'll figure that out.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yep.
I need a second. I'll second it. So I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
One nay. So the motion passed 4 to 1. Okay? That's it. All right.
All right, well, let's hope this is the first of many deals we do together.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Yep, thank you. Now we move to public items.
Okay, so where was I missing?
And the first one is,
Oh, because I was in the... That's because I've got to do those in the other one when I'm gone. What's P-67?
All right, Mr. Pitas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Nictarix Pitas, Planning and Development Department. Item P-68 is in ordinance submitting the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive...
Hold on a minute. Okay, Terry.
Providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 12, changing from COM commercial to PD plan development, approximately 48.98 acres of real property located at the southwest corner of State Road 52 and west of Land Lakes Boulevard, and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, amending Slabberry map 2-937 Tibbetts Land, and providing for a, for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and effective date. This comes to the Board of County Commissioners as a recommendation for a continuance to a date uncertain.
Okay. Need a motion for continuance?
Did you want me to give you proof on this one?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, it was published in the Tampa Bay Times on October 4, 2023.
Okay. Now a motion to continue?
Moved in. And I seconded it.
What date?
It's, um, date uncertain, so it's going to have to be re-advertized anyway.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so? Motion passed 5 to 0. Move on to P-69.
P-69 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on October 4, 2023.
Item P-69 is in ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 500, zoning standards, Section 525 Neighborhood Commercial District, Chapter 900 Development Standards, Section 907 On-Site Parking, loading, stacking, and lighting standards, Section 907.1 On-Site Parking, Appendix A, definitions and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability, inclusion to land development code and effective date. And this is coming with a recommendation for a continuance to a date uncertain as well.
Okay. Move to continue, time uncertain. You got a motion?
Second.
And a second?
When are we going to get this done?
All those in favor, say aye.
No, I'm under discussion.
Oh, you're under discussion, okay.
Yeah, I want this to get fixed. When, when are we going to get it done?
My understand, my understanding is that the staff is currently working on a number of issues that were identified by the planning commission. And so we're continuing to work on it. It's not, you know, being given up or anything.
Okay.
Well, will you come back around to me and, I, 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 I'll listen to that again, but I want to know what, what changes they're wanting to put in.
I've been told that maybe February or March.
Okay.
Well, every time we approve something, we don't get the good, the good improvements that this is going to do, so.
All those in favor of continuance? Say aye.
Aye.
A reluctant aye.
Okay. All those vote nay? None? Motion passed 4 to 0. P-70.
P-70 advertised in Tampa Bay Times, November 22, 2023.
Item P-70 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and Sheet 03, from ROR Retail Office Residential to IL Industrial Light, and approximately 10 acres of real property located on New York Avenue, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. This is coming with a recommendation to continue to the March 26, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay, I need a motion.
Move to continue to March 26, 2024.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like so? Motion passed. P-71.
P-71 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October 25, 2023.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jonathan Toplak, and I serve as the Industrial Pretreatment Coordinator for Pasco County. Item 71 is an ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, amending Chapter 110, Article 4, County Sewer System Division 2, industrial pre-treatment standards, adding dental amalgam and pharmaceutical hazardous waste requirements, providing for applicability, providing for repeeler, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing an effective date. Just to give a little bit of background, Pasco County serves as the regulatory authority on behalf of the state and federal government for industrial discharge into our wastewater system. There's recent legislation that was promulgated at the federal level that we are required to incorporate by reference into our local ordinance. I would like to communicate that these rules are no different than how we have already been regulating these industries. This ordinance regulates the disposal of dental amalgam, sorry about that, and pharmaceutical hazardous waste into the collection system. The proposed ordinance amendments were first introduced to the board on October 24, 2023, by Dr. Justin Wrestler. Staff recommendation is to accept public comment, adopt the proposed ordinance by roll call vote, authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance amendment, and direct board records to retain the original and to file an electronic copy of the ordinance with the Florida Department of State within 10 days after the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Does anyone here speak to this item? It's a public hearing. Anyone signed up?
No one signed up.
No one signed up. Okay. Pleasure aboard.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Roll call, roll call vote. Whoop, roll call vote.
District 2 Commissioner Whitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford. District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 4 to 0.
Thank you.
Move to P-72.
P-72 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 19, 2023.
P-72 is an ordinance of Pasco County, Florida, creating an additional homestead exemption of $50,000 for persons aged 65 or older whose household income does not exceed the specified income limitations as authorized by Section 196.0752A Florida statutes, commencing in the 2025 tax year, providing for definitions, providing for submission requirements for such exemptions, providing for waiver and applicability of such exemptions, providing for annual adjustment of the income limitations associated with such exemptions, directing the clerk to the, of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida to deliver a certified copy of this ordinance. deliver a certified copy of this ordinance to the Pasco County Property Appraiser, providing for severability, providing for repeal of laws in conflict, providing for inclusion in the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, and providing for an effective date. On October 24, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners authorized county attorney to proceed with the ordinance to implement the local option homestead exemption for seniors in section 6D, article 7 of the Florida Constitution, and section 196.0752A Florida statutes for an exemption to their property assessed value of $50,000 for persons 65 or older who own their home. It is their permanent residence and their adjusted household income does not exceed $35,167 for the 2023 tax year. No funding is required. County administrator has estimated the fiscal impact of adopting the additional homestead exemption is approximately $3 million to the general fund side at the introduction of the ordinance. And I, and the recommended board action is accept public comment, adopt the proposed ordinance by roll call vote, authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance, and direct board records to transmit the ordinance to the Department of State by electronic mail within 10 days after adoption of the ordinance, and provide a certified copy of the ordinance to the Pasco County Property Appraiser.
Okay. Anyone signed up?
We do have someone online, Anne Marie Winters.
Okay.
Ms. Winters, are you there? If so, give your name and address for the record. And then you have three minutes.
There she is.
Yes, this is Anne Marie. Yes, can you hear me? This is Anne Marie Winter with the Area Agency on Aging, 9549 Cogar Boulevard North, St. Pete, Florida, 33702.
We hear you.
Thank you, Chairman. The Area Agency on Aging of Pasco Pinellas supports the adoption of P 72, the ordinance that will provide an additional $50,000 to the current homestead exemption for those over 65. We commend the Board of County Commissioners and the Property Appraiser and your teams for this bold and necessary recommendation, which must be adopted. As the coordinating, planning, and funding body for all government, home, and community-based services, the Area Agency on Aging knows too well the struggles that seniors are facing right now, right here in Pasco County with the high cost of living. According to the 2020 census, the population of Pasco is now 561,891 individuals, of which 170,768 are over the age of 80, 60, 60. That's 31% of our population. Of this number, 22,000 are homeowners who are cost burden, which means they are paying more than 30% of their income in housing costs and have an income below 50% of the area median, median income. By passing this ordinance, many thousands of seniors may be helped to pay less in property taxes and ensure that Pasco County continues to be a place where families want to move to and live here throughout their golden years. The AAAP is proud to partner with Pasco County to help seniors stay independent and safe in their homes, and I wish you all very happy holidays and a very merry Christmas. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There was no one else signed up.
Okay. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak to this item.
Move to approve, P 73.
Got a motion and a second.
72. 72.
72. Okay. Roll call vote.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford. District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed four zero. Good deal. All right, we go to P 73.
P 73 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 1, 2023.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. On item P 73, today we will be asking that you accept public comment. You don't have to take action on this matter today. It is set for adoption on 1/9/24 at 1:30 in Dade City. I will read the ordinance title, and I will go through the sections that are being proposed for change. It is PDD 240089, an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, chapter 100, general provisions, section 108.12 enforcement, chapter 300 procedures, section 305 neighborhood meeting, chapter 400 permit types and applications, section 403.7 mask grading, section 403.10 landscape plan, section 407.2 variances, section 407.5 alternative standards, chapter 500 zoning, section 522 MPUD master plan unit development districts, section, chapter 600 overlay and special districts, section 604 Northeast Rural Protection Overlay District, chapter 800 natural and cultural resource protection, section 805 wetlands, chapter 900 development standards, section 901.2 transportation corridor management, section 901.6 street design and dedication, section 904 fired protection, section 907 onsite parking, loading, stacking, and lighting standards, chapter 1000 miscellaneous structure regulations, section 1002 wireless communications facilities, section 1003 gates, fences, and walls, chapter 1300 concurrency and impact fees, section 1302.2 mobility fees, section 1302.3 school impact fees, section 1302.4 parks and recreation impact fees, section 1302.5 library and impact, library impact fees, section 1302.6 fire combat and rescue service impact fees, and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repeeler, providing for severability inclusion into land development code, and an effective date. So this is Land Development Code Amendment 67. That means that there have been 66 amendments to Land Development Code since it was restated in 2012. The proposed amendments were presented to the Horizontal Roundtable, an interested party, parties meeting on October 18, 2023. On November 16, 2023, the local planning agency found the items consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. So we're going to start section by section. So the first code section that's being modified is chapter 100, general provisions, section 108.12 enforcement. It adds subsection G, which is failing to comply with a recorded deed restriction that was utilized to secure county development approval or county mobility fee exemption, waive, waiver or reduction, sorry. So basically that you've been approving many rezonings, and a lot of them have deed restrictions, so it makes sense to add that as a enforcement section, in the enforcement section. Next section is chapter 300 procedures, section 305 neighborhood meeting. So basically, this just basically clarifies that when the, when the neighborhood meeting should be conducted, and it's when the application is deemed complete for content, not actually after it's deemed, it's accepted for review. We did have a situation this year where someone held a neighborhood meeting after it was accepted for review. Their application was quite different because they hadn't met content. So it's, that's when it should be, when they should hold their neighborhood meeting. Chapter 400 permit types and applications.
If you hang for a minute. So here's, here's one thing with the neighborhood meeting that I think we should discuss. They have a neighborhood meeting. People can just be there from the applicant's side, listen, 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 and they're met the requirement. I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a staff person there to take notes, or allow someone from there, from the association that may be there, or whatever it may be, to be able to put a report into what they found. Because I'm getting conflicting things from what the applicant will tell us sometimes to what the people are saying. And just having a meeting is not accomplishing as much as it could, if we really want to get feedback. Okay. I've actually had some people tell me they had a, a meeting, but them people didn't get noticed, or they're too far away from the property so they didn't get noticed, and they think they should have gotten noticed. I hear that more than not. But yeah, somehow we need to make sure these meetings are meaningful for the project, yeah.
Well, those are two different things. I don't know how we have a staff person at every neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it would definitely represent a cost issue, and then there's, there's an availability, depending on how, how many of these meetings go. And again, their role there would be to take minutes, or just observe that it would happen. You know, I mean, we wouldn't be managing the meeting per se.
And again, I didn't say, sorry, Mr. Chairman? Sorry?
Yeah.
I, I didn't say a staff person. I said, maybe someone from an HOA or whatever group is there, so they can get their notes to bring forward to say what was said, et cetera, so we get to hear it. Because we've heard different times, well, they had a meeting, but they wouldn't listen to us. They said nothing's going to change. If someone there from, let's, the citizens group wants to bring a report back, we should allow it or even encourage it. And maybe that can be part of the notice as it goes out, and when the meeting's held, that can be some type of verbiage in the saying, if somebody here from the public wants to take some notes, they can and submit them.
Chair?
Yes.
Maybe an idea, Mr. Mariano, is if it's in, you know, if it impacts a neighboring CD or HOA, I mean, they're, they're a semi-formal, formal governing body. It would behoove them to take a formal note and submit, whether it's a submit file to clerk or something. There's merit to the point being made on, on notice and comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that it's something that you need to spell out in the Land Development Code in terms of, in terms of it, direction to the administrat, if it's a staff person, direction to the administrator to, to have someone there doesn't need to be in the ordinance. And I don't know that by ordinance you should be requiring an association to be there. I mean, we can make it clear in the, in the ordinance that if there is an association, they should be invited to attend, you know, something like that. But I don't, I don't know that, because the association doesn't attend, and it's a mandatory requirement of the ordinance, the applicant has no control over that. I see where you're going. I, I just don't know that.
Yeah.
That unless it's your team, that it's something that we should be mandating.
Example would be like Saddle Brook. How many meetings went on there? Multiple meetings. And frankly, we, I mean, that's, that's, that is a unique situation. Could happen again in a different phase, like with the estates at the, at the links. It's the same type of thing in separate meetings, as the associations did. But I think something to allow for them, encourage it, however you want to put the verbiage in, not make it mandatory, but encourage it and welcome it that it can be received as part of.
Brad has something that.
But I'm not looking for staff to go. Be okay. All right. Let's hear it. Brad.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Brad Tippin, Planning and Development. I think I have an idea that, that might work for this. All of these meetings are done with a, with a written mailed notice. We can include a line in that notice encouraging any attendees to provide the county with any written feedback that they would like regarding the meeting. And we can include that.
That was just what I'm looking for.
All right. That's easy enough to do. We can do that on letter. It doesn't need to be part of the ordinance. CDDs and HOAs in the area already get notifications, so they can just provide it if they choose to.
Okay. Right. That sounds good.
Question?
Yes.
We already made a change about sign notification locations, right? Because we talked here about, they only put it on one road. This happened on Black Lake. It was Allen 54, and it could have been on Black Lake. And so did we already make those changes?
No, the code basically says it has to be visible from a public roadway that abuts the project. So like, to put it on, on off-site, that would be like an off-site sign.
I think in this particular case, this, this road was kind of at an apex. You had Black Lake Road, so.
So then they would have to do two signs. Because if it's at two roads, they would have to put a sign on each.
So that's already in our code?
It is, yes. Correct.
Okay. I thought we just had asked to make some changes to the sign locations, but.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Didn't know, did we change the size of the sign and all that detail?
Did not change the size of the sign. It just says basically 24 by 36, and it could be purchased from the county.
Terry, we talked about that. What happened with that? Terry Petos.
My understanding is that staff is working on that. The direction was provided to the staff to provide new sign sizes and new sign types. I will say, though, last year, on January 1, the law changed where public notification requirements to the newspapers didn't have to be made. We could put them on our website. We've been working on that in the meantime through the year, pretty close on that front. However, it did raise the subject of how does this, how does the county want to proceed with the actual signs, and how we want to mandate them. So we were going to look at, we were, we're actually looking at the entirety of our public hearing advertisement process and system at the moment. So as soon as we get the, the, the public notifications situated, if we want to put these on our website versus in newspapers, then we're going to also address what kind of signs that we want to have, and how to let the applicants participate in that process.
When we talked, you told me that you really liked the Hillsborough County signs, I believe. They were larger.
They had, they had some good examples.
I don't know why that, we just didn't incorporate that. There were larger signs, very visible signs, and we, we shouldn't allow crossouts and write-overs. Sometimes you'll see some crossout kind of like written beside it. And I, I think it should be somehow some type of verbiage as far as location goes.
Yes.
Like, you know, in the Saddle Brook, when they first, first put the signs out, they were like in the driveway coming in. Nobody can stop. You'd have to stop, walk 200 yards, 300 yards to go read what that sign said. They changed it later, but we got to make sure that they're in a, in a good location. So.
Yeah.
What would it take for you to get the Hillsborough signs back?
The new signs that we would work on, that we've been working on, would not include handwriting, handwritten signs on. They would actually be printed signs. That's the idea. And so they would be printed signs large enough to actually see from the roadway when you're traveling at least 35 miles per hour.
You got to be big size.
That's going to be big.
Yeah. They're lucky in my eyes, I got a problem.
Shall I continue?
Hillbird ordinance may have problems.
I have a question on the landscape section.
Haven't gotten there yet. Do you mind if I just read just the Scrivener's error?
Yep.
And then I'll talk, we'll talk about the landscape. So chapter 400 permit types and applications, 403.7 B4D mask grading. So there is a Scrivener's error. There should be 200 feet, not 20 feet, and that's basically just showing the abutting developments. 20 feet, that doesn't make any sense. It should have been 200 feet. Many of the other requirements are 200 feet as well.
Okay. Question on this one?
Sure.
A number of places in the county. One I, that's to my mind on Trouble Creek, where we had someone who came into property without, without a permit and cleared a beautiful, beautiful forested property with, with an intent to put something on there that I think we would never, ever allow. But the penalty, what's the penalty for clearing without a permit? It's not enough.
So I believe on that one, and I don't think they're here to answer that question. The county attorney's office did agree on a payment on that, and I don't remember what the answer to that is.
But I hear it all the time. It's, it's, you know, just, it's better just to go ahead and do it and pay the fee, the penalty fee.
That project is stalled because the, I guess they're supposed to be getting some permitting through the Southwest Florida Water Management District.
But your fines are capped by state statute.
What else can we put on there? Don't call it a fine, call it something else. Let's get creative. No, we need a deterrent. There, there, people are coming and clearing land without permits all the time. And, and then we have to figure out, how do we count the trees that they cut down? And it's just not, I just think we need to, needs to be more punitive, in my opinion. And is there anything else, Jeff?
I thought you were limited.
Huh?
Thought we were limited in what we could, $500.
Well, that's what I just said to the commissioner, and she told me to get creative.
Okay. It's cheaper to pay the fine.
I mean, we've done things like stack the charges, if you will.
Well, that's, and, yeah. And so technically, it's the violation, depending on how the code officer writes it, that the violations could be each and every tree that is taken down, and that gets the number up.
But then you have to figure that out.
I'm not sure whether or not we can create basically a timeout for someone who violates the code. I'm, but that's something we could look into.
Maybe there can be no development for X amount of years.
That would be timeout.
That's what?
That's what I meant.
Okay. Well, sometimes you have to explain it to me different.
I was, I was.
So we'll, we'll.
Could double the penalty of the submittal as well, you know, that type of thing.
Okay. Can we get some creative ideas?
They'll bring it back.
Okay, there's no action on this item?
Oh, no, I'm not done. Moving on to landscape.
Okay. So the landscape 400, 403.10, all that we're doing here is, this is a, from when we created the landscape plan section, this is really just for landscape plans. So we put a portion of 905.2 into this section. We're taking it out of the landscape section, moving it back to 905.2, which is where it should be. This is just, the applicability section for this section is changing, where it's only applicable to projects where landscape improvements are required. So there's not really any changes to the section.
But that's a problem.
Just taking out, moving it into the other section.
Can I, can I speak on this one?
Yes, you may speak.
And I've had multiple meetings with staff on, on some issues with the landscape ordinance and, and going back and asking businesses who have let all their landscaping die, or like some businesses, after you get the CO, they take their trees out. And, and Brad, you've been in on these meetings, so I don't know if you want to step up here on this one. The thought that we had in, in our group meetings with Code and Denise and Brad is instead of putting the onus on a land, on a business to try and find their original site plan, or staff to go back and look for the original site plan, because apparently Code can't cite anybody unless they have what, they know exactly what's missing, why not say, you know, it's clear that your landscaping is not how it was, and we can tell through photos. We have modified the landscaping ordinance and improved it since a lot of these businesses went, went in. For example, we don't require those berms anymore, which are very hard to maintain. So why not just let them redo their landscaping to the current rules, which are better anyway? And we would need to tweak this to allow that, correct?
Yeah. This, this would require some, some additional tweaks to get there, but that is, again, one of the options. We looked at an interim option, which is to improve their landscaping, but not necessarily all the way to Code. If they're doing it voluntarily, and then if they're not doing it and they don't follow through, we could come back and, and require something a little more. There's a whole bunch of different things we've looked at and talked about with a bunch of different people, but we would need to tweak the Code a little bit more to, to make sure we get that to happen.
So it seems very reasonable and easier on everybody to say, you, you have your option. You know, you can put it back how it was permitted, or you can just come up to the new code. And I think everyone would choose to just come up to the new code, which is better. Anyone?
Ms. Chairman?
Right? It makes, it's, it makes it so much easier on our staff and our code enforcement. It really does. And the reviewers.
I agree.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I agree, but just the, the one corridor I have trouble with is US 19. And again, I think we should look at that corridor, maybe do a separate workshop on it to go find out what's the best way to set it. Because a lot of those people have let this stuff go, because before that, you couldn't see their signs, you couldn't get any, any visibility. It's kept a lot of pole signs in place because of the height and whatever, so I, I think maybe it is time to do, just do a study. I'm okay with the change you're talking about right here, but I think we need to do an overlay district.
For most of the businesses on 19 came in when we had no landscape requirements. Some of the automobile businesses are there, they've let it die or have taken it out. I would, I would, I will send you pictures of what's required in other counties with the automobile dealers and, and what we have, and I will tell you, ours is less. So, but other than that, mo- most of the businesses haven't come in since we, most of the problem children. But anyway, I'm, I'm glad that you're in agreement with this and.
So would it, so would it be to give the person the option to either comply with their approved landscape plan?
Original one?
Correct. The original approved landscape plan, or bring it up to the current code.
Yeah. Which they have to provide, not the county.
Correct. No, I, I understand.
Yeah. To save you guys from going to that warehouse and digging through all the boxes.
Right. Okay. All right. Moving on to the next item, chapter 400, 407.2E variances, and then this is the same also in 407.5 alternative standards. So basically this acts, adds a change in the effect of final determination. If the planning commission denies a variance or an alternative standard, the planning commission shall not consider any further application for the same variance or the same alternative standard on the same property for a period of 12 or more months, or for any other kind of variance or any other kind of alternative standard for a period of six or more months from the date of denial. That's very similar to the way we do special exceptions. This happened this year, as you may probably recall, that the planning commission denied a variance for a setback on a parcel, and literally the gentleman applied for the same exact variance a month later and denied it again. And then, then that came to the board, and the board, you know, reversed the decision on appeal. But they, that person should have just appealed or waited, or whatever the case may be. So because the specifics on the situation did not change. The next section is chapter 500 zoning, section 522.5A ECM-PUD, purpose and intent. This is just a Scrivener's error. It says that there is an emergency communications division, flu classification, there's no such thing. It should be EC employment center, future land use classification. For the next item, you're going to probably, you're going to see this quite a lot throughout, changes to the name of Pasco County Fire Rescue. So in this next section, 522.9E, 3F, 2AV, CC-MUD paving, grading, and drainage, we're just changing the name of Pasco County Fire Rescue Division to Pasco County Fire Rescue Department, because it's not a division, it's a department. Next section is 500 street design and dedication. It replaces fire marshal with county fire marshal. So the county attorney's office is making some changes to the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, and they've asked me that we really need to be consistent throughout. So you're going to see this quite a bit. Same thing in 522.9 onsite parking. Next section is 600 overly in special districts. It changes the fire department access road to all fire department access roads. Next section is chapter 800 natural and cultural resource protection, section 805.4A impacts to wetland mitigation, and 805.6 restrictions on post-development wetlands and upland buffers. So basically this just changes so that, and this is consistent with comp plan policy 1.3.13. For developments not required to plat, the post-development category one wetlands and upland buffers within the non-residential parcel shall be conveyed by the applicant as a conservation easement. And this codifies current practice, and you've probably actually seen quite a few alternative standards, because the code doesn't currently say that. Next section is chapter 900 development standards, 901.2E. It revises the number. This is a Scrivener's error, it's unintended consequence of amendment 45 when removed the dedication waiver allowances. Again, next section is 900, 901.6D2, street design under development standards. It replaces fire marshal with county fire marshal. Next section is 900 development standards. It replaces county fire marshal with county fire marshal and adds the word county to fire rescue department, so Pasco County Fire Rescue Department. Next section is 905.2. You heard about the move from 403.10 landscape plan into 905.2. No changes, just taking it out of 403.10, bringing it into 905.2. Next section is chapter 900 development standards, 907.1D6 onsite parking, loading, stacking, another one where we replace fire marshal with county fire marshal. Next section is chapter 100 miscellaneous structure regulations, wireless communications facilities. It's another thing, again, that you're, that the time, the time starts ticking from when the application is deemed complete for review.
What are we, what's on our screen here?
I'm so sorry. I fast forwarded too much.
Keep rolling.
Okay. So here we go. So basically it changes the time the application is received to when the application is deemed complete for review, as to when the, the clock starts ticking. And then we modified it. There's a Scrivener, Scrivener's error due to some changes that we made in, through chapter 27 Pasco County Code of Ordinances. Next section is 1,000 miscellaneous structure regulations, 1003.3, gates, fences, and walls. It clarifies that the four-foot maximum fence height in front yard applies to corner lots and double frontage lots.
But they don't have to get a permit, so.
They don't have to get a permit.
So where, so how do they know anything about our fences?
I think that is, well, I think we need to do a better job at putting things on our website and showing all those things that we did, and would love to talk to the team who's working on the website, because I think we're getting, our website is changing, to incorporate that in there. Next section is 1300 concurrency mobility and impact fees, section 1302.2. It just adds full-time as a qualifier. That's for small businesses. The following section, and you're going to see this quite a bit throughout, chapter 1300 concurrency mobility and impact fees. It adds non-eligibility for affordable housing rate if the project has invoked the land use zoning preemption or property tax exemption in the Live Local Act. It adds moderate income affordable housing rate, which is equivalent to the transit-oriented design rate, and adds non-eligibility for affordable housing rate if the project has invoked the land use zoning preemption or property tax exemption in the Live Local Act. And, and it also adds the non-eligibility for TOD, TND, and mudroom developments that have invoked the land use zoning preemption or property tax exemption in the Live Local Act. Next section is 1300, 1302.3C5, school impact fees imposition. I'm going to tell you that it is the same exact thing with parks and rec and library impact fees and fire combat and rescue fees. All these sections were adding or partial exemptions. Adds affordable housing exemption. No fees are due if the unit is affordable to a family with a median income that does not exceed the 80% of the median income for the Tampa-St. Petersburg Clearwater Standard Metropolitan Statistical Area. It adds non-eligibility for the affordable housing rate if the project has invoked, invoked the land use zoning preemption or property tax exemption in the Live Local Act. It adds moderate income affordable housing partial exemption, which is a partial exemption if the unit is affordable to a family with a median income between 80 and 120% of AMI. And it adds non-eligibility for the affordable housing rate if the project has invoked the land use zoning preemption in the Live Local Act. It also removes alternative form of payment. Again, we're asking today that you accept public comment. There's no action required by the Board of County Commissioners. This is set for adoption on January 9th, 2024. Comes to you with a recommendation of found, a finding of consistency from the local planning agency, and here for any additional questions that you may have.
Mr. Chair?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So, under Commissioner Adams, I was going to bring up the loom and the MPUD that we talked about, which is at the Preserve. Is this the right, is this an okay time to bring it up? Can that be added in here, or do I have?
I am, I, let me see. I think I'm making changes to the MPUD section.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But then that would definitely, why don't, why don't you talk about it? Because I'm not sure that that's.
So, we sent some pictures, and this one's going to be out of order. If you could put up there the photograph of the Preserve, whoever we sent the photos to. That is going to be a, like a, it's probably an aerial. I don't know, Katie may be able to come out here and go over what I sent you. So Commissioners, I didn't know this happened, and I probably wouldn't have been okay with it, but it was a decision that was made by staff, not by us. And if you remember, the loom is the land use equivalency matrix, and, and there's great reasons to keep it in most circumstances, but in a circumstance like this, I, I would not have been okay with this. So Denise, can you say what happened in September?
I don't know the exact numbers, because there, I wasn't ready to discuss this right now. But basically what it is, is that this particular project invoked the land use equivalency matrix in order to use, I think what they were exchanging is 30,000 square feet of commercial for 400 and something multifamily apartments.
So we lost commercial at Suncoast and 54 for more apartments. And I would not have been okay with that. There's a lot of, there's a, there's a lot of multifamily in this development already, and I just didn't want to lose commercial. Or office, it could have been office.
How did we lose that?
Well, it's, it's not something that comes to us.
Right. That, that is something that's within the MPUD, that the applicant, that, and there could be an administrative approval of the land use equivalency matrix. So as long as the equivalencies are shown in the table as to commercial is the, there's an equivalent multifamily, these are the number of trips, and they, there's an equivalency that's used, an exchange. I think I have somebody behind me.
It's not apples to apples.
Brad Tippin, planning and development again. Yes, we can actually footnote those loom tables with some restrictions on what they can and cannot trade off when we bring those to the board for approval as part of the MPUD process. Most of them are in the MPUDs now, some of them historically have been in DRIs, but, or comp plans, I'm sorry. But when we do it with the MPUDs, we can bring them forward, we can, we can add or modify those as the board sees fit in particular situations. Situations with mudroom and, and other things are a little bit complicated, because there are certain density levels that are required to be there, so they need to sometimes up certain densities in certain areas to create that core density that's necessary. So sometimes that commercial does get exchanged there, but there's minimum amounts of commercial and, and office that are also required to be retained as part of that equation, so.
And they did, we did retain some commercial and office, which I'm.
Quite a bit, yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's good. It's just was, you know, I just remember when we did the Seven, the Seven Oaks one, which I was for. They took multifamily that was back inside the community and brought it out front. That was a little different. That's my rec, which I would rather have that apartment complex out front than buried in a community like Seven Oaks that just had that one road going through. So, but I don't think, I, I feel like this circumstance was a little different than that one, so I just thought maybe we should talk about it.
Chair?
We can, it's, it's difficult with the loom, because looms are, are, are kind of meant to be a little bit specific to each situation, whatever each individual project is trying to achieve. So to make a more global thing as an ordinance edit might be difficult, whereas each individual MPD, like I said, there's footnotes on those looms. So you can say, we don't want you to convert any of this for that. You know, you can convert industrial for office or something, but no residential. You can make those types of, of restrictions on the actual MPUDs themselves as they come through.
Mr. White?
Who is who?
I'm sorry?
When you say who, we, who can make those footnotes? Because.
You can.
We can.
You can score.
Well, we, we generally would make that as part of the review process, when we know it's going to be an issue. The GoSor County Attorney's Office is very good also about making sure that we don't swap certain things for other things that the board's not looking for. And then that does come through planning commission, they can make that request, and then it comes to you as well, and you can make that request.
So, once, once you adopt the MPUD, they can't make any changes to those.
So, so sentiment from this board theoretically could be, if we agree with this today, let's not be horse trading office and commercial space for more multifamily rental product and developments. I, I think that's a.
And as a general rule, we can, we can certainly keep that as we're processing.
At least let us know, maybe.
Yeah. It would be, like I said, each individual case, depending on a mix you're going for, you know, it's very difficult, again, to make a very general ordinance in that regard, but you will have a shot at every MPUD where you can make sure that that's there, much like we've been doing with deed restrictions with the Live Local. You know, you can.
So an MPUD like this, Brad, wouldn't necessarily tell us they were doing that or wanting to do that before we voted for the MPUD.
It would be in the conditions of approval.
Okay.
The table would be there.
You would just have to pick up on the fact that the, that the chart allowed them to swap all these things.
And we can make a point of putting in our agenda memo that there is a loom to kind of call that to everyone's attention, so that you can look at that and see if there's trade-offs in what they are. But once, again, once it's voted by you guys, we can't change that.
And, and I'm not talking about swa, moving residential stuff around. I'm talking about losing commercial and office.
Correct. This is not, a loom would, is not designed to be used to move things around on the site. It's to take entitlement, it's changing entitlement values. So that's, that's the total function. In the, in the old days, these were done to avoid substantial deviations for DRIs. That's kind of where they came from. But they've continued even after DRIs. So it basically, based on the IT manual for the most part, it says this generates X number of trips, and this generates X number of trips, and so no harm, no foul, you can trade that. Well, that may not be what the board wants, is to change that commercial into single family or multifamily.
Yes, it looks at only one, one consequence of a change, one impact of a change. Yes, it looks at only one, one consequence of a change, one impact of a change, which is the trip generation. It may not look at the employment generation, the other things like that. So that's where those footnotes, we can reduce and restrict or mandate. We can also mandate a certain amount remain.
Yeah, because I would love to have had another touch point there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Denise, do you remember, I thought we voted on this thing because this was very high residential, not as high initially, and then we switched it and you said you could do it, but we made a choice to let this happen, didn't we?
In this location here specifically, it actually, it's in the, in the land use equivalency matrix that you can move commercial to multifamily apartments. You can't move commercial to like, I think, site bill residential, but to multifamily you could.
It's a big one, it's like 400 and something.
I know, and I think it's D.R. Hood and it's above, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think when this came before us, we, they came to us saying.
Didn't come to us.
To make, to make, I recall hearing about it and I think it was something like, we need this residential density to make this whole deal work. So we sacrificed that to get this, is how I recall it. I don't know.
Yeah, there was, if you recall, there's a Pasco, DC port project that's in that area there. And to be able to kind of shift some of that land around and do some of those things to maintain the actual Mutterum requirements that they were searching for with their neighborhood cores and things, they had to actually do a little bit of switching and swapping. Again, a lot was retained as well, so, you know, it was in the loom, it was kind of designed to function like that to try and, try and be able to balance that because when you're doing these zonings, they're very early on, the market's changing as you go. So you want to try to be able to address that. Obviously, we don't want to lose the, the employment generating uses, so we, we can certainly restrict those looms to.
No, and I'm all for, if you can make the switch from the residential to the commercial, let that happen all the way through. The other one, there should be a little bit more grit to it.
What do we need to do to make this an item?
They got the message.
We can hear about it, so.
Yeah, it, it'll come through with all the MPUDs. What we will do is we'll make sure that it's clearly noted in the agenda memos that we, that we bring to you that there is a loom so that you can look at it and you can see if those footnotes are okay. The footnotes are where we're going to restrict those, those transactions.
Can you, can you put up the, this is a really bad picture. Do you mind going to just Google Earth? Because you can't tell what's going on in that picture. I'm sorry I didn't see that.
I also, I had to tell the board, there is no legal requirement for you to have a loom at all. So, I mean, that's something that the development community may not be particularly happy with that suggestion, but you can approve a project and if they want to change the entitlements, then they'd have to come back to you. The loom is, is designed to give administrative flexibility for their, for their project.
I just think if we're not giving up commercial and office, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean.
Yeah.
For now, I mean, that's, that's the big thing.
And we'll take that direction as we're working on the, the MPUDs moving forward and make sure, again, we'll bring it to your attention if there's one there so you can double check and kind of see what that is.
Well, this, this map still isn't up to date for some reason. But it's, it's the land over here on, well, you see where a touch point is? It's the land on the main road to the right and south of it that is, that's the land that was left for commercial and office. And there's still some left, but I think half of that's now going to be apartments.
Yep.
But that was one of our major employment corners.
Right.
Okay, that was my.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, if you would call for public comment on this item.
Chair. I have a, I have a point to add to this. I was going back and forth with Mr. Carbala on when to bring this up. He said, bring this up now. So, we did, early on, we did another mass vote on LDC when I first started and Commissioner Bradford was here. And we first joined, but going through and then coming off the heels of the homestead exemption for, for seniors, we voted Land Development Code to not allow folks, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong here, but not allow folks to live in their RV while they're building their home on an acre or whatever they have. And for affordability, I think we need to amend that rule to allow folks, if they live on an acre of land and more zone agriculture, that they could live in their RV, because they're going to have one anyway, be parked under a cover, instead of them having to go pay rent somewhere, $2,000, $3,000 a month, they're living in probably a pretty nice RV, they're building their home. But the caveat of this would be they have an active building permit, right? So they're actively building their home and they're, instead of spending their money on rental elsewhere, they're expeditiously reinvesting it into their property to hurry up, get their CO and then their property's on the tax roll. So when we talk about affordability of building and living in Pasco, I think this is one way that we can help homeowners do that and they can stay on their property that they own and they use. And as long as they have an active building permit, that folks can do that. It also goes to Commissioner Starkey's point when she brought up, I think, accessory dwellings a meeting or two ago. You know, they could build their garage first as long as they're an active building permit that they can stay on their site, whatever the parameters are we agree on. They're on their site, building their home and they're not having to go rent, rent somewhere, so.
That's actually already allowed.
Part, it is allowed.
You have to pay their impact fees.
Yeah, well, part of the problem there was the fact that people used to come there and start building their home, living in a RV or a trailer. And then when they got through building their home, they didn't move the trailer, they just kept it. You had two families on that same property.
Yeah.
And that's why this rule was made. So that would not happen. So if you can come up with some idea of how to guard against that, then I would be for that. But you got to guard against the fact that they continue and then move another family on that same lot, so.
Yeah, so, so the one, the first, the second one, I suppose, which was building, we have, we have folks here who build a detached garage with residential on top until such time as that then they actually build their home. And, and basically that, that's been allowed so as long as they pay their mobility fees, impact fees and everything else. And then when they build their home, they have to make that into some other type of, you know, use that's not residential. And then they add the house and then they pay the difference in the mobility fees based on the square footage of the structure, because now you have a, a larger structure. First you fell under one tier, now you fall into a different tier. So that's, that's always been allowed.
Chair, so, so for clarity, so someone can put in septic well, for example, Quail Hollow or wherever they have an acre, acre or two zoned AR, they can go and stay in their camper while they're building their house?
No, no, I'm talking about the detached garage question. So there, you could start building a garage that has residential space and pay the mobility fees, the impact fees, all that stuff.
For that space.
And then later on, build the house and then that residential space has got to go away because you're at Quail Hollow, for example, it's one dwelling unit per acre. So if you only have an acre, you can only do one dwelling unit. I know that there is going to be a conversation about accessory dwellings, but I, I don't know that that's something that, I, I think there was a former staff member that was working on that and maybe somebody can provide.
So what about their RVs?
RVs are, that's not, you cannot, you cannot reside in an RV while a house is being built.
See, I disagree with that.
Okay.
I disagree with that. If somebody's building a house, they have an active building permit and they have a brand new RV and, and tie into their septic and well, they're, they're not paying rent somewhere, they're taking that $2,000 to $3,000 and it's encouraging them, and feel free to jump in here, Carbala, whenever you can, it encourages folks to continue to invest, they're not wasting money on rent and that rent's probably leaving and going to Texas or New York, wherever the hedge fund is. It's their property, they're using it. If, if we set parameters, it's a little bit more work on code, I guess, but we set parameters where the filing say the RV's not any older than 10 years, whatever, whatever it is. Folks are on their property, they're working, they have an active building permit. Hernando has this ordinance, for example. Hernando County allows this. To me, it encourages homeownership. It allows people to keep more money in their pocket and not waste their money on rent. That's just my opinion. I think we should allow that to happen and I think it would encourage homeownership. If you're buying an acre land in Pasco these days, you're making a significant investment.
So it sounds like I have a question. Should this be something that would be like in agricultural districts like AR, one acre lots, not like in the middle of a subdivision or whatever?
Yes, yes.
Where there's an acreway that would never allow that.
Devil's advocate, because I've lived in a lot of countries and I've seen how different, how homeowners have gotten very creative in avoiding paying certain taxes. For example, in some of the islands, you don't, you don't get taxed until your house is done. And so you can look and see, they all have rod, all these wrought iron poles sticking up for the second floor that they haven't built yet, so technically their house isn't done, so they get taxed very differently. So, you know, technically someone could be building a house and never get their CO because they, or, or they could really draw, draw it out. So I want to put some guardrails on something like that. I think it's interesting. But I think it needs some guardrails on it.
100%.
So I think that has to be workshopped among staff and I don't think that's something we can do today.
Yes, yes, sir. This, that can't be added to this package anyway.
Okay.
So you'd, you'd have to, you'd have.
You have to advertise that.
You had to bring something else up.
But I think that's something we can take up as, as action for.
Our new AKA wants to say something.
Oh, go ahead, Mr..
I would say the key to address that is an active building permit because the permit expires after six months. And so they would need an active.
Build a house in six months.
They would, well, if you get inspections, you need inspections within that six month period to get, keep your permit active.
Before your time, we had a building official here who had an open permit for 10 years to avoid having to pay property taxes on that. He's no longer employed by us.
Yeah, I guess.
I, I think an active building permit is a key, is a key item.
Yeah, I, I.
Mr. Chairman?
I certainly think we need to talk about this more.
Ms. Mariana?
Yeah, I would love to see what the Hernando County ordinance is, so maybe you can send a copy to us. That might be the easiest way to do it, but anything we can encourage someone building an acre on an acre lot, that's a good thing.
Okay, we'll take that under action.
All right. So what do we have left here?
We need to take public comment.
Public comment? We're not voting on this, are we?
You're not, just take public comment.
Still public hearing.
It's still public hearing and, and we're going, is anyone signed up?
There was no one signed up.
One signed up?
No one signed up.
Oh, no one signed up? Okay, is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? Seeing no one? Okay. We'll close this item and move to public hearings.
So when is the?
You've already.
January 9th, 24, at 1:30 in Dade City.
The, the next public hearing for this item will be January 9th, 2024 at 1:30 or as soon thereafter as you get to it.
In Dade City?
In Dade City.
Okay, all right. Move to P74. And would you go over the information for everyone?
I'll be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If the staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's.
All right, thank you.
P74?
P74 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October 18th, 2023.
P74 is PDD 247726, is a zoning amendment, Cherry Hills West MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development. We request that to continue the item to the January 9th, 2024, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
There is no one signed up.
Okay. No one signed up?
It's a continuance.
Was anyone?
It's been advertised as a continuance.
Move to continue time certain?
No, well, do we have to?
Was any?
Okay.
Does anyone here speak to it?
It doesn't, you don't have to take public comment, it's been advertised as a continuance.
All right. So we got a motion on second to continue?
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Oh, I do.
I thought she said no, do we have to?
I didn't think that to go on.
I thought we have a second.
Kept it on the consent agenda.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Most passes 4-0. Move on to P75.
P75 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October 11th, 2023.
P75 is PDD 240056, is a development agreement amendment. Renner MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, KB Homes LLC, modification to develop, to the development agreement for the Renner MPUD. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the local planning agency and the Planning and Development Department.
Is there anyone here, is anyone signed up?
No.
But I'd like, can I get a quick presentation? Because I did a lot of work on this MPUD, so.
Sure, the staff member is here.
So is there anybody in the audience wish to speak against this item? Okay, not seeing anyone, we move on. Well, she asked for.
Presentation.
Yeah.
Have that presentation.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning and Development. So this is item PDD 240056, it's an amendment to the Renner DA. Here's the location of the Renner MPUD. And so this is an amendment to the approved DA that was required in the original DA, paragraph 11. Here's a subject site location of that MPUD on Bexley Road. And here's a quick contextual map showing the subject site, Bexley Road and the Clark Property MPUD and the Hagman MPUD to the north. And so the, the modification essentially is modifying the exhibits of what the developer is going to be essentially doing and providing that 12-foot multi-use path in the sidewalk along those segments of road. Both sections, sections A and C, which are shown here. So section A is that blue highlighted portion of the roadway. Section C is the pink. And here is another exhibit further highlighting those three sections of road.
So what, what's being modified? That's my question.
Okay, so it's, essentially it's those, those exhibits and the modification to this, to this DA was required by the original because at the time of the approval of the DA, feasibility wasn't known because engineering hadn't been done about what the developer could or could not build. And so they determined that on section A, on that exhibit there, that the, the 12-foot multi-use path is going to, going to be extended west on the north side of Bexley Road when the remaining segments of the Vision Road are constructed. There's currently insignificant right of way, currently in the parcels aren't owned by the applicant. And on section C, there's currently insignificant right of way on the south side of the Wisteria Loop to construct the five-foot sidewalk and to provide the required subsaner road improvements. So the applicant is providing that sidewalk on the north side of the Wisteria Loop because that Clark MPUD.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
That I showed here is controlling the land that's already been set aside for drainage and floodplain mitigation.
Okay, so, board members, we, we had quite a few meetings on this and I went out there with our county engineers and their engineers and Ray Gad, if you remember, the sheriff lived here. Part of the problem on this road, and this is part for our new AKA, was that part of this road is designed as a urban section and part of this road is an, a rural section. And it gets, and the trail, the multi-use trail is supposed to be on the north side of the road.
Correct.
And, and so I am curious, what was worked out in front of that? Was that a Lennar neighborhood or who, whose neighborhood is up there close to 41 where that's the first one we approved and it's built? It wraps around our elderly nutrition building that's over there. And Clark, that, that Hagman MPUD, they were, they were donating some land to the county. And that there was plenty of room for that trail to go through that. So where is that land donation? I just, I need a lot more specifics in here.
The applicant has their, should have their engineer here who would be more adept to speak to the exact. the exact.
Because it sounds, if I'm hearing you right, we're just getting little bits and pieces of the multi-use trail. And that was how this neighborhood.
Right.
Going to be able to get out on the trail, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, they just don't own or control any of the land.
But we do, because that was given to us, that, where's the applicant?
Hey, Shelley.
Do you have more maps than this? Because where's the piece of land that Hagman, that bottom piece along Wisteria was given to the county? Or the developer?
So unfortunately, our engineer is not here today. But I can tell you that the exhibits that are laid out with.
Shelley.
Sorry, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
When the engineers went back and looked at that, they have consulted with Mr. Gad, they've consulted with Mr. Couch. I think the sheriff was aware of what we're doing.
Yep, Jeremy lives out on this road too.
Yeah, everybody has met out there and discussed exactly what we're proposing on these exhibits.
The changes or the original?
No, the changes. And everybody is in agreement with the changes.
So can you be more specific to me than saying it's A, B, and C? Are you building, so you are not building the multi-use trail?
So the multi-use path, according to the engineers and everybody that looked at it, what can be fit is in Section A, which is the first section on the exhibit. If you go to Exhibit A, I believe is where it has the sections laid out.
That really.
On that particular section.
You can't tell on that.
There's a 12-foot multi-use trail that will be extended to the west on the north side of Bexley Road.
From that map, you have no idea where you're talking about.
So if you go to the additional exhibits, and I think Section A is set forth on, let me see here. It would be the second page of Exhibit A. There's two, sorry, there's two key maps setting for Section A. And then the next one after that sets for Section C.
Okay, this is the perfect map. Because see that big piece of land there? That big light green piece? That's been given to the county by Hagman. So there's plenty of room to put a trail in there.
So that would be on Section C. And what the engineers are saying is there's currently insufficient right-of-way to construct a sidewalk.
Well, then.
And I believe that that land on the north side is controlled by the, another MPUD that DR.
Yeah, Hagman. Now Hagman said they were giving that to us. I mean, that could be a park and a trailhead. So someone has dropped a ball on this because there's plenty of room for the multi-use trail to go on that piece of land. I mean.
As of right now, there is not. Now, I don't know.
No, there's acres and acres. That piece was given to us or pledged to us from the Hagman MPUD. Don't you guys, you guys remember this?
I'm new to this.
Okay, I am a hundred percent positive that they said that we could have that piece. So I'm not buying that we can't put the trail there. So this is going to have to be continued. Because I won't go for that one, when we have plenty of room for the trail.
I mean, yeah, we'll be happy to go back. I'll have the engineer here and we'll be happy to go back and look at it. But from, I'm just telling you from what I know standing here today, I'm being told there's insufficient right-of-way currently, and that's why it's being designed the way it is. That they tried to fit what they could where.
Yeah, well.
And everybody, all the interested parties, at least the resident interested parties on the road that were involved in this coming up through process before.
You didn't have either Clark or someone from the Hagman MPUD there to tell you that, well, you have all that, that, can you go back to the other map?
My understanding is that the area that you're looking at right now is being used for their stormwater. And so what they gave us is what they could give us, and there's not any additional right-of-way there. That's my understanding, because we have actually worked with that other owner to try to get what we could from them.
I need to list, I recall them saying that they would give that to us, and there would be plenty of room for the trail there.
So they said that they would work with us on it, and there is, I believe, a condition in their approval that required them to work with us on it. So that's what they did. But again, we don't control it. And so what they gave us is what they said they were willing, in terms of what we could work with.
There's a problem that they didn't give us enough to fit the trail. So again, I'm going to go back and we're going to have to dig into this a little more.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to go back.
Because this is really important for that community, because there's no room on that road, and that's going to be a busy road to ride anywhere. I mean, and this is how they're going to get, get over to the Orange Belt Trail. So this was a whole condition of approval for me, and that's why I went out there and met with Jeremy and Ray and our engineering staff and their engineers, and we walked it. And I don't remember if Clark was there or not, but there was plenty of room for the multi-use path. And it didn't have to be smooshed up against the road. So something has happened here.
When we went back and discussed with them, what we did is what they said they had room for. And I don't know how far along they are in their site plans, so I don't even know if their stormwater's been approved. But I think what we were told and what the county's been told or the staff has been told is that they're utilizing some of that for their stormwater drainage, and so we could not, there was nothing more to give. That was what we were told.
All right, we'll just have to have another conversation.
Mr. Chairman? And I agree with Commissioner Stark a hundred percent. When this was talked about, that was an easy thing. I've been out there to see the site as well. It shouldn't be a problem. And if it means we've got to bring the other developer in to have the conversation with them, it's going to be our staff that's going to have to lead that conversation. And I suggest they do so.
We can play the tape. We can roll back the tape. Okay, on the next section, Section C, what are you saying about Section C? And that is the transition, I think, from the rural to the urban road section, which we all knew had to be worked out when this was all started.
So on Section C, it's a similar issue with the insignificant right-of-way on the south side of the road.
Well, I don't think we ever wanted it on the south. We wanted it on the north.
Well, it was insignificant right-of-way to construct the five-foot sidewalk that's going to be along the south.
But there's room on the north to connect to.
On Section C, there's room on the north.
For the multi-use path?
Multi-use, correct.
Okay. But, you know, the restaurants and all that, Capital Taco and all that, that's out there on the south side, but they'll have to cross safely if there's no room on the south. I'm not as worked up about that as much as making sure that multi-use trail gets put in.
Correct, and we can certainly confirm that with the developers of Hagman.
Okay.
And make a motion.
Move to continue to.
Would be one, January 23rd, 2024, if you wanted here in Newport Ritchie, at 1:30 or as soon thereafter as.
Is this one that can go on either side?
Yeah, with its proximity to US 41, you could do it on either side, especially given that we haven't had any members of the public reach out to us.
Probably the time though.
Can we say either or?
Well, you can continue it to the January 9th meeting and then continue it again.
Shelley, how much time do you think you'll need?
Deadline is the 12th or the 9th.
Deadline is.
Deadline of what?
The deadline for us to be able to get everything in is too close to hit the 9th.
Okay. I was just trying to help them. Okay, so move to continue to the second meeting in January.
January 23rd, 2024.
January 23rd.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passed four zero to continue. Move on to P-78?
76.
What, 76?
Okay, P-76 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October 4th, 2023. Item P-76 is PDD 247696. This is a zoning amendment. I have some things to read into record corrections. First is that it's Greenfield Place LLC, not LLP. Greenfield Place West rezoning. It's for a change in zoning from an AC to an I-1 Light Industrial Park District with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction that preserves the uses to I-1 Light Industrial Park District uses. So another change in the memo is on page four or five of your memorandum, finding of fact number 11B. The totals are a little different. We did provide that to the clerk's office. So it basically states the proposed amendment to IL, future land use would allow for maximum development potential of 2,261,3635 square feet. That should be 8,520,771.6 square feet of non-residential intensity. And then it should be called out again in the following sentence. And then the resulting in a net gain of approximately, it now reads 1,582,970 square feet of light industrial land uses. That should read 7,842,106.6 square feet of light industrial land uses. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay, does anyone signed up to speak to this?
There is no one signed up.
No one signed up? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak against this item? Seeing no one, can we turn the motion? Move the call.
Second.
This is protected, right?
Yes, that is a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion passed four zero. Move on to P-77?
P-77 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 19th, 2023.
Hi, Amy Farrell, Budget Director with the Office of Management and Budget. P-77 is a resolution for the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, application and public hearing for the Innovation Preparatory Academy. So what is a TEFRA? It's a federal tax law that allows for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds for qualified private activity. IRS regulations require approval from the County Commission as the highest elected governing body with jurisdiction over the area in which the project will occur, affinding the project is in the public interest, a public hearing to gather input for the public, and approval will allow the Florida Charter Educational Foundation to borrow at a tax-exempt rate. So we are here today to ensure that we're complying with these IRS regulations. So how will the bond be used? FCEF is seeking to borrow up to $25 million. Funds will be issued by the Industrial Development Authority of the County of La Paz, Arizona, not Pasco County. The purpose of the bonds is to finance the acquisition, development, construction, and equipping of an approximately 56,300-square-foot charter school building and ancillary facilities. The charter school will be the Innovation Preparatory Academy and located in Wesley Chapel. It will fund capitalized interests and other costs of issuance as well. The county will have no obligation with respect to the bonds. The county is not responsible for paying the debt service. There is no cost to the county resulting from the approval of this application, and FCEF is not borrowing from the county. I now ask the Chair to open for public comment.
Okay.
There is no one signed up.
No one signed up?
No, sir.
Is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item?
Seeing no one, move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed three zero. Move on to P-78?
P-78 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, September 6th, 2023.
Good afternoon, Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development. Just a little housekeeping first. Throughout this review, there have been a number of ex parte communications which have all been forwarded to the clerk's office already. And here we have Beacon Woods East MPUD. It's PDD 247742. Proposed is a zoning amendment from an MPUD to an MPUD to amend the master plan and conditions of approval to set forth additional passive uses that may occur in certain golf course areas such as parks, open space, drainage, and utilities. And the site is located in western Pasco County. Here's the location map. Current zoning districts, the current area is MPUD, and it's surrounded by a mix of general commercial, professional office, PUDs, and MPUDs. Future land use is RES 6, residential, six dwelling units per gross acre, and PD Plan Development. The context map shows the Regional Medical Center, Point, Hudson Regional Library, Veterans Memorial Park, and a few schools. Here's the master plan. A majority of this has been built out. The conditions of approval were revised to include specific passive uses such as the neighborhood parks to include walking trails, unlit open play areas, hot lots, playgrounds, and recreational ports, and potentially an entrance road utilities, floodplain compensation, and drainage. The conditions of approval were also revised per the Planning Commission. Condition of number 38 was revised to say shall rather than may. The planting and proper maintenance slash removal of trees and/or shrubs shall be allowed. And a final sentence was also added to that condition for further clarification. Tree removal shall be allowed where it meets the criteria in Section 802.3.1 or 2 of the Land Development Code, and such tree removal shall not constitute a prohibited agricultural activity or harvesting. And with that, the PDD and the Planning Commission recommend approval with conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, one was, was this one, one was public or you gave that?
There are four people signed up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I thought this was going to get remanded back to the P, to the Planning Commission.
What am I missing?
We need to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard. If I could just take one second, I want to say something about your staff. Approaching the end of my 27th year working with Pasco County Government, it's been a really fine year. You have some great staff. You have new leadership with Roy and Nick Irwin and Jason and Public Works. And your staff working on these amendments and these rezonings are really doing a great job. So I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you every day of this year and with your great staff. Sorry about that, there's nothing to do with this. So here we are. But I didn't want to say that this morning because your public comment went on forever. So I thought I would do it now. And don't forget the great County Attorney's Office. They have, they're really seasoned, and you guys are lucky to have all those people. So, yeah, it's like a, where's Barbara going? What's she doing? Anyhow, I just want to say, because it's our last meeting of the year. So this is the most unusual matter I find myself doing for these 27 years. I represent the contract purchaser on this property, Ryan Holmes. We have an agent of record form from the owner of the former golf course, Mr. Lowman, for the pending MPUD amendment. That being said, I've seen the communications between Mr. Lowman, the property owner, and the county requesting that MPUD conditions 37, 38, and 39 be removed. I understand that the Estates HOA, which is the neighboring HOA to where my client proposes to do a development project, has also made that same request. We are okay with those requests. We propose to do a development here and purchase a portion of the golf course to use for parks and ponds and floodplain compensation. That's what my client, and then there's all these other issues about Mr. Lowman and trees and maintenance and these other things that have, I now learn are a part of my amendment, and that's why we're going to have to ask for a remand. Because what the County Attorney's Office has told me is in order for those conditions to be removed, 37, 38, and 39, that it needs to be remanded back to the Planning Commission, and some different language needs to be added to the conditions. The reason why I want to go through this with you is my client's been at this for a year and a half. I've been representing this for a year and a half. And as we go now to backwards, now we're, I mean, we started out, this was a non-sustancial amendment, the staff was going to administratively approve, then it became a substantial amendment, which we went along with, and now we're at another crossroads where we have to go backwards. So, but I'd want you to understand why we're having to remand to the extent that you're able to give any direction as we go through this next process before it comes back to you. The reason for the remand is that the conditions that are being asked to be removed, 37, 38, and 39, are addressed agricultural use and maintenance in the event that the HOA, HOAs, do not accept the gift of their respective portions of this old golf course. And actually, in reality, it's really just in case in the event that the fairways doesn't accept their portion of the golf course, because the enclave has already voted, 87% of their membership have said, we want to accept this gift of this property. So this, so this what-if is the scenario that we're talking about in 37, 38, and 39. Let me just remind you how this proposed gift to these HOAs has come about. Obviously, the property owner is agreeable to do that. But it's actually through my client's, Ryan Holmes' proposed development, which includes the purchase of a portion of that former golf course for ponds and parks, that the option for the HOAs to be gifted their respective portions of the old golf course is facilitated. Ironically, we keep getting stopped and stalled and going backwards now, and we And we can't actually facilitate, my client can't facilitate, the option for those HOAs to be gifted this property without the approval of this amendment, which we're now going to go backwards on. But understanding that that's okay, we just want to get through this. I do think part of the problem here, and I'm really puzzled by it, is that we have the enclave who's actively working to get this property and supporting this effort and this amendment, and, but the Fairways is, I don't know where the Fairways is.
Are they, are they here today?
I, I've never talked to the HOA, I haven't seen them at any of our public hearings. And so we're doing what-if conditions, and we're now going to go backwards to do what-if conditions. What if the HOAs don't take the property that they've been offered as a gift? You know, all the years I've been doing this, we have many golf course situations. This is the first one where it's actually where the homeowners can control their own destiny and take the property. We haven't had that situation, but there, but now we're still having this issue of what-ifs because the Fairways HOA hasn't stood up and said, we want to take it like the enclave has. So we're in this what-if. What if the Fairways HOA doesn't take, accept the gift? What do we do with the agricultural use? What do we do with the maintenance? Well, I think the idea of remanding it is remanding it so I can change my application to allow for the agricultural use of the property, so that the permitted use, in addition to all the things that I've added relative to my client's proposed development, we also add in there the agricultural use. The significance of adding that in is that then, if the HOAs don't want to accept the gifts, or HOA in this, this standpoint, because it's really just the Fairways, then Lowman, the conditions would read that Lowman can maintain the status quo, which is agricultural use, tree farm harvesting, and, and that, you can't use your maintenance, your maintenance ordinance, you cannot enforce it against agricultural. So, to me, that's what I, I have to do, is to amend my application to allow for agricultural use, so that then it's clear that in the what-if situation, if the homeowners, the Fairways Homeowners Association doesn't want the gift, that then this, we know what the rules of the game will be, and that'll be the status quo would be maintained.
Barbara, who's saying it has to go back to the Planning Commission?
David Goldstein, which I-
Why? Can we not make these decisions here?
No, you can't.
Yeah, no, it's, I, I looked at it-
Item, the item was not advertised for an agricultural use. They did not advertise that, the recommendations, so therefore the recommended, the public hearing that was held below and the recommendation you got from Planning Commission did not include the use that suddenly, in the eleventh hour, is wanted to be added to this application.
Does it go a little further, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yeah, staff found, like, when they shut the golf course down, they put trees all the way through, through the ponds, through everything else, shut the golf course down. And that was going to be it. And they then turned it to a, a tree farm.
Yeah.
And we had no control over it.
Who's we?
Staff found, staff found in the development agreement, if you think way back, we had a development agreement to go put an assisted living facility. In it, it showed the matrix. It showed what could be where. And in no time could he be allowed to, by the development agreement, to turn it into a tree farm. He had to come back to us, and that's when this conversation started. So, bringing, bringing it forward, that's where we're at. So, your staff says that a agricultural tree farm was not compatible with this.
Do you think the residents would rather have had an assisted living facility in their backyard versus a forest?
No, 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 that's a separate parcel, not talking about the golf course. It just happened to be part of the MPUD. Across the way, there's a, it's got nothing to do with the golf course, just happened to be there. But in the development agreement, it's part of the, the larger picture.
So can-
Let me, let me give you a little more information. The, the golf course itself, there was fear between arsenic, they did arsenic testing. I think that was pretty well resolved. One of the things that was out there is, all you get those, all the stormwater ponds have trees in them. Those trees and storm events, when the trees get older and older, older, they start collapsing, they start falling down, could cause major issues, and you're also shrinking the amount of drainage that you have capability of coming in. Now, I'll just say this now, because again, I thought this was getting remanded, didn't know we were going to have this whole discussion, but being able to lay in all this, laying all this out, I was told in agreement with staff that they agreed to take all the trees out of the stormwater ponds. Good. I was told they were going to stick with sixty-foot lots. Good. The agriculture use change to allow them to go take the trees out, and they shall be allowed to go clean the trees out when they want, I'm good with that, too. So, I don't know why all these other changes happen, but as far as the remand goes, if the County Attorney's is going to go back for that reason, so be it.
The issue is, the what-if scenario, what are the rules of the game if the Fairways HOA doesn't take their gift?
Are they, are they here? Do they, do we know if they want it or not? And then it doesn't matter?
They're all right there.
They haven't formally opted out of the HOA.
So, well, can we ask if Fairway is here? I mean, why would they not want that? So, what, maybe they could speak and we could find, does that help any, Barbara?
Love to know what they're-
Yeah, so let's, let's hear from Fairway. And then maybe we don't have to remand it back.
Come forward and state your name and address.
And if you were sworn.
And if, and if you're sworn, because he's probably one that's there. Name and address, and if you're sworn.
My name is Jack Brummett, and I live at eighty-five forty-two Coral Creek Loop in the subdivision that is in question. I'm also the president of our homeowners association of four hundred and eighty homes.
Okay.
We, we have accepted-
Have you been sworn?
Yes.
Okay. You're, you're from the Estates.
I am from the Estates.
Okay, should look up Fairway Oaks, right?
I'm just speaking up as one of the HOAs who have accepted-
Okay, so we need to hear from the Fairway HOA. I think, I think that is, that's what we need to hear from, because I think we're good with everybody else. And if no one's here? Is anyone here? Wait. Are you coming up to speak? Okay. From Fairway?
Name and address, and if you've been sworn.
I haven't been sworn in.
Okay. If you would please raise your right hand, and if anybody else that plans on speaking has not been sworn, please stand and raise your right hand. Okay? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and then-
Very end of the mic bends, if that helps you.
You can bend it down?
Bend it down.
Eric's helping, coming to help. There you go. There you go. And then if you're naming your address, please.
Hi, Annette Pellicano, ninety-two sixty-nine Water Hazard Drive, Fairway Oaks, Hudson. I'm just up here to tell you I am on the board of the HOA. I'm not here representing them, I'm representing myself as a homeowner, but I'm on the board.
Okay.
Merry Christmas. I don't have any answers for you. I don't. I don't know if the board that's there now, we're having elections soon, but the board that's there now hasn't made a decision on whether to take the land or not.
So-
We are.
Okay, Barbara, do you mind standing up there with her? Maybe you guys, so, does, I guess you can't give, they, they have to acknowledge that they want to accept the gift, or it just stays as it is?
So, pardon me. So I think what you need to do is say, what if, what happens if they don't take the gift? That's where we're at, that's where we're at. Because Mr. Lowman, the property owner, is saying, if they don't take the gift, by the way, Mr. Lowman is saying, I'm going to give my property away. And Mr. Lowman is saying, well, can I read his letter? I've never spoke to him, but I can read his letter to you all. He's saying, if they don't take the gift, I am asking to maintain my status quo, which is I can have an ag exemption, my trees are, fall under agricultural use, and I don't have the normal maintenance obligation that I would have if it's not agricultural. That's what he's saying. So he's, he's saying, don't buy these conditions numbers thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine, change my status, status quo, just because-
Yeah.
The HOA won't take the gift.
So-
So it's kind of like an option. It's like, okay, either they take it as a gift, or he gets to maintain the status quo, and you guys stop fighting with him. Because right now, you've had enforcement actions against him, you've, staff's spent a gazillion hours on this, I spent a year and a half on it with your staff. I think the clear options are, HOA takes it, or he's allowed to, you'll stop fighting with him, and he can have his trees and his ag exemption and-
Because what, if he's not ag, then he's paying property taxes on land he can't really do anything with, so he, so as an ag person, it's got to stay ag. Because what-
Well, it isn't, it currently is under dispute whether it's ag or not, from a zoning standpoint.
What we would do with this remand is clean up the paperwork, so if the board approved the, the new paperwork, it wouldn't be disputed anymore.
That's correct.
Because the county would be getting out of it, saying, all right, it's two clear options. It's either the HOA takes it, or Mr. Lowman's going to keep doing what he's doing today, and we're going to stop fighting with him, and stop using public resources. Because if the HOA doesn't want to make, to have their own destiny, public and the county and staff need to get out of it.
But I was under the impression that the trees were put in there without county approval.
Well, that's the dispute.
No, it's not.
Because ag doesn't need approval.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a-
Mr. Chairman?
Dog in that race.
Mr. Chairman?
Of course in that race.
When this course was shut down, they went out and put trees all the way through. Straight line shot, all the way through, through the ponds. There was no approval through the county to do it.
But when, when do we have to ask, get approval for people to plant trees?
Then he went to go get an agricultural tree farm. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So, you have to have agricultural zoning to do agricultural.
But-
This zone, this was an MPUD, it did not have, it did not have a, have a agricultural permitted use portion of it, like some do.
Okay, but let me ask my question.
Zoning administrator has made a determination that this property does not have agricultural.
But do you have to have ag to plant trees on your property?
Yes, if you're going to be green-melted and try and have, and have a-
Okay, so if you want ag taxes?
Civil culture operation, which is what Mr. Lowman-
Okay.
Has alleged he-
Would do.
Is doing, is doing. We abated that, they've, they appealed the zoning administrator's determination about whether or not they had an ag, ag exempt, an ag use. We abated that all because this zoning application was going to resolve it and was going to take ag off the table. As I said, that-
Okay.
Mr. Lowman, at the last minute, sent an email in to staff that said he wasn't good with that. And that puts the applicant, who has, in a precarious position of, what do they do now?
So what, so I did speak to Mr. Lowman. I may or may not have ever met him. I think I might have met him somewhere, but not in a formal meeting. So I wouldn't know what he looks like. But I did have a conversation with him. What is the difference between conservation and ag? Because I think he said he would be okay with a designation of conservation. And I, you know, if he's here.
Well, I, I think the way to resolve this is, I'm not speaking, I don't represent him, but looking at this, what I do, like, how do I get this resolved, so we're not still here doing this month after month, is that we make agriculture, we, we basically say the status quo is what he's doing today is now permitted under this amendment. Again, we got to, we got to go one way or another. Either these HOAs take this, or Mr. Lowman uses his property like he is now. I mean, if not, we're always going to be in the middle of it, like, trying to do something in between. And that's, and so I think what you do is, you, you put it out there and you're clear. And I think one thing to the, Fairways, to their, you know, maybe defense is that we probably haven't been clear, you know, what actually are their options? And if you're clear by my paperwork, if I remand, if we remand, that it's option A, it's going to be agricultural use, tree farm, bona fide ag, they can harvest, and you can't go after them for maintenance, A. Or B, homeowners control your own destiny, take the property, it'll probably be easier for them to decide, because we don't have this somewhere in between, like, okay, is, if we don't take it, will Lowman have to do X, Y, and Z? Well, the answer will be no. If you don't take it, Lowman won't have to do X, Y, and Z. So if you clarify that paperwork, and the other HOA, the Estates HOA is okay with that, because they intend to take the property. So they're fine, they're like, change the paperwork, get rid of thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine, write whatever it is that County Attorney's Office says we have to write to clarify the paperwork, come back, and then you can make, you can formally say, I'm okay with it, the HOA doesn't take it, we're going to stop chasing after Mr. Lowman.
I was just trying to probably not have to send it back to planning.
If, if the HOA doesn't take it, yes. That would be what the paperwork would request.
So, I have-
They haven't done it yet.
I have another question.
They haven't, nobody's approved that yet.
About the mowing?
Trying to clean up the paperwork, so you would see what your two options are. Right now, we are some hybrid of thing of-
Yeah.
And it's causing probably the uncertainties, that's probably why you have, your HOA, well, I don't know why your HOA hasn't done anything.
Barbara.
But-
Excuse me, Barbara.
I can clear the paperwork and make it very clear.
Did he do paperwork to turn this land into, before he planted it, into agricultural use? Did he ask permission to be able to do that to that property?
Represent him?
Represent him, I don't know. I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't represent him. I've just been trying to learn what's wrong with my paperwork, so I could get-
I know with an orange grove, an orange grove in the past, when an orange grove froze out, you could put pine trees on that orange grove, and it would, because it was ag before, it already had ags on it, it stayed ag. But you're talking about an MPUD that had a golf course on it, it's totally different. So you got to ask permission for it to be able to have ag.
I'm just trying to fix where we're at today. I'm not taking a position that what he did was right or wrong, I, I'm just trying to move forward. Again, if my client backs out of this contract, the off, the gift of this property goes away, and everybody just starts fighting again, and you all continue to spend resources going after Mr. Lowman. I, through this, me, through representing a developer who is going to develop a portion, purchase this property and facilitate the gift to these homeowners associations, that's the resolution that gets everybody moving forward, in my, in my opinion.
The only problem with that is, there's no guarantee that they accept this property, that it could be changed to ag, which would lower the taxes on it, for those HOAs.
If they take it, is it conservation, or what is it to the homeowners association?
It would be open spa, open space or park, common space.
Okay, so, common space.
I-
Okay. Isn't there a question about mowing heights? Isn't there some restriction here that requires the HOAs to mow it?
Yes, that's part of thirty-
The restriction which is in your, which is in this approval is that of your ordinance forty-two dash one. And it says, mow to eight inches.
Is it the whole thing that has to be mowed, or just a perimeter?
I'm thinking it's the perimeter.
Because I remember that being an issue in what I talk to people.
Terry would know probably, I think it's fifteen feet.
Where's David? Where's David?
CPM.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So let me ask you a question, because this is, again, I mentioned this, Barbara didn't want to, Barbara didn't want to answer it. I mean, she doesn't even want to answer about what she knows as far as how these trees were just planted, but that's okay.
I don't know.
Barbara, you don't.
I don't know.
Barbara.
I swear under oath, I do not know.
Okay. So, sixty-foot lots, that was agreed to from a meeting I had with staff, not direct. Is that still agreed to?
So, this MPUD modification has nothing to do with the R four property. The R four property where we're developing is already R four, and the R four zoning district, minimum lot size is sixty by one-twenty. This MPUD amendment has nothing to do with lots, because it's already zoned. But we're not intending to change the R four zoning, sixty-five hundred twenty lots.
Let me ask Tammy a question. And I've heard maybe two different agendas, so in this, you've got specific statements about the, what can be built in a multifamily, et cetera. Why is that in our document?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand your question.
You've got, you've got things referenced in here about what can be built as far as multifamily.
Multifamily?
That's what I was-
What do you mean, in the Beacon Woods East MPUD?
Right.
That already exists. None of that has changed, that's original. We are not modifying any of that. There's not going to be any multifamily on these golf course areas. There's not going to be anybody living on these golf course areas.
But why, why would it be all restated in the document? Because what scares me, it says this supersedes all other things that are done.
We did not modify the conditions of approval for Beacon Woods East, except to add that section regarding the golf course areas. That's the only thing that was modified. Everything else in there was already there.
Okay, so no sixty-foot lots have to go there? No other developments going in these golf-
There's no residential on the golf course areas at all.
There's no, no townhomes or anything else going in?
No residential on the golf course areas at all.
Okay, when we talked initially, I got word that the stormwater ponds were going to be cleaned out. Not the uplands part, just the stormwater ponds where the drainage goes. That's what I was told, and now I see, I'm hearing it's not true anymore.
Correct, because staff could not get behind that because the land development code, the comprehensive plan, everybody else, is all for trees. We cannot be setting, PDD cannot be setting a precedent to just blanket remove trees. So staff figured we would leave that, we would leave that to you guys to make that determination.
Let me stop you for a second. So we're looking at a MPUD.
Correct.
We're looking at an MPUD that had a giant, probably a forty-page stormwater plan, showing about a hundred and twenty acres of stormwater ponds all the way through it, where all the drainage is going to go. So we've got an MPUD that's existing, as you just said, all the conditions that were there. And it shows all the stormwater from all these homes that are so tightly compacted that have no other drainage except to the golf course. So all the water is going to flow to the golf course, on the back of even that one road right there on, I guess, Tennyson, Danbury Lane, I'll say. That's like the old first hole. All the way through there, that whole ditch that goes right behind these homes, is now loaded with trees.
I'm not a drainage expert, but there were drainage experts out there.
I want to finish, I want to finish, then you can answer me. I want to finish. So all the drainage that's here, all the way through, that was designed to take all the water from all those homes, all the way from Five A Road, all the way down, because it all flows down to this one area, and now we're going to go put trees in there. So if we have a series of wet events in a few years, and maybe twenty, thirty years down the road, and all these trees get saturated, so much so, they now all topple over. Now that's going to fall on the estates. And it could happen the same thing over on the Fairway Oaks, where they have these giant, giant holes where you have to hit from one area to another area. And all these fairways that are lined up with all these trees, that are now going to start toppling over, hurricane comes in with wet conditions, they're all going down. Now you've got the burden of HOA. As these trees also grow and grow and grow, they're taking up capacity designed for these stormwater areas, specifically engineered many years ago with this MPUD. So you say you're all about trees and all that good stuff, et cetera, but you're about, we should be looking at the stormwater drainage and do calculations. What's going to happen with all these trees if they do fill up, if they do grow up? Let's say no storms come for thirty years, what's going to happen if the storage capacity is already built in and already approved? These people bought into a plan, and now in all the stormwater areas, you're going to let trees go that could cause them liability. And I would think that that partly was why Fairway Oaks is afraid of taking those trees. I mean, taking those fairways, because right now, they're all full of trees in all the stormwater areas.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, that is something that, we understand exactly what you're saying. We've seen similar situations that sometimes there are pros and cons to those. In this particular situation, given some of the recent discussions by the board and some of the information on the plan, we as staff did not feel comfortable making that decision. But if this board wants to direct us to consider that, we can certainly do that as we take this back to planning commissioner.
All right, so I'd sooner remand this back into the conditions that have already been stated, and also to study the stormwater plan that was already approved, and what the effect would be to allow all these trees as pine trees in the stormwater ponds. If they want to put other trees in there, and we can do that through even a tree mitigation fund, I'd even sponsor that. But to have pine trees in stormwater ponds, to me, does not work.
Did, wouldn't, would that be a SWF mud issue?
SWF mud will not rule on it.
Well, that's, that's, that's a SWF mud issue. Taking away your, messing with your master stormwater drainage plan, right? Talk to me.
SWF mud has a five-year pond inspection program, and so every five years, a professional engineer has to sign off that the ponds are functioning as they intended.
It's only five? I thought it was two.
It's five. It's five.
Okay, so they have to sign off, so someone has to inspect those ponds?
That's correct. That's correct.
So do they have an issue with trees in ponds?
It all depends on the location. It depends if they're dry, are they perennially wet, species of tree, I mean, there's all kind of variables which impact.
I mean, if SWF mud doesn't care, or tell, talk to me.
So I think what Mr. Meiser was saying is, is we, we get, it's really a situationally specific decision that they make in that regard. What type of tree, what's the location, what type of pond is it?
Your staff's been out there, and SWF mud's been out there. Somebody can tell them that, anybody? Somebody? Your staff's been out there. And I think people want to explain this to you better than me. Your staff's been out there and looked at it, and SWF mud's been out there. Maybe a couple of people that know about that tell you about that.
If you're going to speak, I need your name and address, and if you've been sworn.
My name is Jeff Baumgartner. I'm from Hudson.
Okay, we have mail from you. I think we have some mail from you.
While we are on the subject of trees, I just wanted to have a little bit to say.
Mr. Baumgartner, two, two things. Can you give your address and state if you've been sworn?
Yes, I've been sworn in. Seventy-six twelve Sylvan Drive, Hudson.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Going back to the question about all these trees, those trees, I witnessed it being put in by the State of Florida Agricultural, okay? They're pretty smart. They probably had a lot more education than everybody that we know about trees. They came with a, over a million-dollar piece of equipment and precisely put those trees in, spaced them apart. There's, they're experts at building tree farms. They would not have gone down into drainage stitches if it was not okay to put them in. Second of all, if we're worried about flooding and drainage, these trees are going to suck up so much water that there's going to be less of a drainage problem by a long shot. There's no problem with the drainage stitches having trees in them. They'll only drain faster, which helps Hudson Avenue and every place else that drains. So I guess all I'm saying is, I watched this whole thing go. It was done with precision. The State of Florida's agricultural division knows a whole lot more about what they're doing. They wouldn't have done something that was not going to be a good project, a safe project, a project that is not going to be a problem, but is going to give us more green space. This development that they're looking at building right now is incredible. What else is being built anywhere around West Pasco that they did not tear down? Every tree made concrete jungles. This developer is going to put parks in, it's going to have green space. We're going to have younger people coming in, living in these homes. They're going to learn about nature. We're going to have more oxygen. Trees are good. Trees are not a problem. Trees got to stay there unless the developer makes something better for it, like a playground, a path. The houses. This will be the most incredible development that Hudson has seen in thirty years. And yes, it needs trees. Thank you.
All right, so there's nothing we can do. It has to go back.
Mr. Chairman, I would, since this is, I would take public comment before you remand.
Okay.
If that's the desire of the board.
You signed up? I am signed up, and I've sworn in.
Give your name and address, and if you've been sworn.
My name, yes, my name is Jack Brummett. I live at eighty-five forty-two Coral Creek Loop in the subdivision of the Estates and Reserve. I'm also the president of our HOA, of representing four hundred and eighty homes. I appreciate the opportunity to address this panel and explain our position. As you may know, on, on January the twenty-first, our associates met and voted to, by a percentage of eighty-seven percent, voted to accept the twenty-five acres that had been offered to us. We're excited about that, and we're excited because this, the development of the enclave, the Beacon Woods, solves problems for us. It takes care of the maintenance on nine fairways that have been, not been taken care of in the last four and a half years. It affords us the opportunity to take care of five fairways for ourselves, so that's fourteen of the fairways. In fact, it's all of the course, golf course, old golf course in our community. And we've been dealing with this for four and a half years, and we want, we, we're ready to move on, and we want to move on. Because of the continuing delay of this, and it looks like it's trying to be delayed again, we went on and, and worked, deal with Mr. Loma and have leased the twenty-five acres that we hope will be conveyed to us eventually. We've bought insurance, liability insurance for it. We went out and spent seventeen thousand dollars for a commercial lawn mower to take care of this. On the, on the eleventh of November, we asked for, on a Saturday, we asked for volunteers from our community to come and help clear out three of the fairways so we could begin mowing. We were hoping for ten or twelve people. We had forty-eight people show up that morning to help clear these fairways. They worked themselves to the bone in the, in that morning, and at the end of the day, at the end of the morning of work, their question to me was, when, you know, when can we do this again, and have a community workday, and finish this job? We're, we're ready, we want to move on, and we're ready to do that. Having said this, and I had the same question that the attorney had before, we have some concern with, in this petition that was put up, we have some concern about thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine paragraphs, which actually prohibit us from, from harvesting any of these trees. We have to harvest, have them harvest because it's, it's good forestry, you know, management. And it's also makes it safer from fire and, and such. Okay, I'm, I need a little more time here.
Yeah, that was, that was a three minutes.
Come on, I'll let you have some more time.
We, we want, we're concerned about these. Thirty-eight says we're prohibited from harvesting. We, we need to harvest. We need to clean, you know, thin these things out from time to time. Paragraph thirty-seven says we've got to keep it mowed to eight inches.
Yeah, that's not.
We can't do that. We, we, we have every intention of keeping it for, most of it, four, four inches to five inches high, but there's areas where we can't, we can't mow. We'll have to go in with weed eaters. Even in the trees, there's rows of trees, some of them are three foot apart. We, we can't get in between them. It's going to get more than eight inches, so we need, that's the reason I'm asking, for this thirty-seven to be removed from this, from this document. The other thing is, we can't, we can't, you know, ask for ag again, but we should be able to, to ask for something to give us some relief from these rules and regulations.
Part of your plan, yes, sir, part of your plan is to remove some of those trees so you can mow in between, right?
Yes, we will, and, and for us to do it as a homeowners, volunteers to go out there with their saw and saw all these things down. The companies come in and do this for you. They'll, they'll do it for free for the, for the access to the trees and make mulch out of them or whatever, but we can't have our hands tied, and we've got almost ten thousand trees in this, in this twenty-five acres, short, just short of that, and this, it's a big job.
Do you have, do you have a problem if it's not green belted?
Big pardon?
Do you have a problem with this twenty-five acres if it can't be green belted? Because that would mean the taxes would be higher than they are under green.
Well, we're non-for-profit anyhow, so it doesn't really make any differences regarding taxes to us.
Okay, all right.
So that's not, that's not an issue.
Not an issue.
The issue is not being able to live to the codes of the county, keeping it at eight inches, and end up being fine like Mr. Loma was fine because he didn't meet the codes. We, I just don't want to subject our homeowners associations to that, put us in that position. But we're, we want to move on.
Okay.
And I encourage you to vote yes on this amendment or this petition, but take out some of these paragraphs that hinder us from really doing what we need to do.
Okay.
Thank you for your service, and thank you for consideration to what I've asked for.
Thank you. Jack, hang on for a minute, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So I, I think there might be some confusion about what has to be maintained. I think it's just the edge perimeter around the property, not in the woods, in the trees, or any of that. It's just the edges. That's all that requirement of the eight inches is. So it's not in the woods.
I understand that, but this, they want to take better care of it than just that. And to do so, they've got to remove like a row of trees to be able to get their mowers in and take care of it.
And part of the clause that's in there, it lets you do that. They took away the may and now it's shall, so you can do that, if it helps you.
I want to be, to allow a company that, I guess you call them tree harvesting companies, let them come in and do the thinning, and, and if we, if we can make money on it, that's good, but if.
I think we've got that in there for you.
I just don't want it to cost us money. There's, there's, like I said, there's thousands of trees.
Right.
And we're not, we're up to mowing, but we're not up to cutting down trees and doing that. We, we want to be allowed to harvest those trees.
And, and just so, you know, when your email come over, I gave it to Tammy and staff, and I haven't go look at it, try to like address what you wanted to do, and I think they have addressed that, so that you can harvest out if you like, harvesting's not the word, but to thin the trees out, you can do that, it's in there. So that is, that is okay to do that. And again, just the border is all that the low grass maintenance is.
Okay. Okay.
You have two more signed up.
I have two more signed up. Is this gentleman here one of them?
I do not know.
State your name and address.
Back again. I live at thirteen six oh nine Woodside Drive, Beacon Woods East. Been there for thirty years. I'll make this real short. Everybody said what needs to be said.
Born, have you been sworn?
Have you been sworn?
Yes, I have been.
Okay, thank you.
Just to give you a quick background, if you've been around here long enough, you know these names. Magnolia Valley, River Ridge, Quail Hollow, Quail Ridge, The Dunes, Sea Pines, Spring Hill, Seven Hills, Timber Oaks, Forest Hills, Gulf Harbors, Pebble Creek. They're gone. Golf courses are gone, and the people that live on these communities probably don't have very many options. This is an opportunity for you guys to come up with a, with a plan that a lot of people could probably follow. So with that said, I, I am in favor of the proposal, and I wish you the best. Merry Christmas.
Okay, Merry Christmas.
All right, the next individual signed up is Tim Driscoll.
I have been sworn in.
Okay.
My name is Tim Driscoll. My address is eighty-five seventeen Danbury Lane. Out of the back of my house, I look across the fairway, and what I will say to you right now is that the trees may be a concern in going forward. You know, you might have flooding, but I understand the trees absorb it, and I also understand that Florida has tornadoes that could come by and take those trees and throw them somewhere, but for trees to go down, it takes a lot. So personally, I like the trees, but what I wanted to mention is, last Wednesday, I sent an email to my commissioner, as well as the other commissioners, and I was very, very pleased in the response that I got, both from Sonia Walling and Tammy Snyder. They gave me timely and informative information regards to what you're speaking about today, and it saved me a lot of time of tracking it down, and I'm not sure how that gets recognized, but I was very impressed by the professionalism and the information that I received from those folks remind me being in the private sector, frankly, all right? So I wanted to share that with you, and, and I did just want to note that in what I received from the attorney, they didn't have the PDD number, they had an RZ number, and you folks used the PDD number in regards to your genders, not this RZ number, and alls I would request is that maybe going forward, that we get a notification from an attorney that includes the PDD number as well. In regards to what you're speaking about today, as Jack has said, this has gone on for years and years and years. There's a solution that, that has been presented, and if there's a way in which this can be figured out, and people can move on with their lives, I would say go ahead and do it. And that's what I would ask you to take a look at. Unfortunately, the developer is stuck because the developer is being put in a position of where the owner is saying, you get this, and we'll give you that. That's not the developer's issue. The developer's issue is doing exactly what they did, which was to come to you and present their plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have another gentleman wanting to speak.
Yes, everyone that was signed up has spoken.
Okay.
My name's Jeff Man. Yes, I have been sworn in. My address is eighty-three eleven Danbury Lane, Hudson. I bought my property in 'oh eight on the golf course, wanting to live on the golf course and retire. I lived on a golf course for thirty years in Iowa where I came from, and I liked the peace and tranquility of it, played the sport, my daughter's good at it. And a month, I moved down here full-time in, what, nineteen, middle of nineteen, and found out that they're closing the golf course. Matt Loma was closing the golf course, and that was kind of a. Matt Lohman was closing the golf course, and that was kind of kicking for my retirement or because it's my peace and quiet. I'm right behind, I don't know if you're familiar with playing the links, I'm right behind green number one, tee off box number two. And so, it's closed, it was kind of a bummer, then here comes Matt Lohman and plants all these trees, and, okay, we're going to have a tree farm. And back to the discussion, is it, is it ag or is it conservative? Okay, so the state came in and planted thirty thousand trees. What did Mr. Lohman pay in taxes? Did he pay agriculture or conservative? How did he pay last time's taxes or whatever? Where is that? Where I come from, if you put something in a tree farm, you can't touch it for ten years. And that's, I don't know Florida law, I'm not an attorney or anything, but it's just, I'm right at where, now I'm going to have, I rode in my backyard, I used to have peace and quiet in the backyard, or my front yard, I have a road in my front yard. Now, in my backyard, I'm going to have a road from, well, there's two roads exiting these two hundred and fourteen or eighteen houses that's going to be built there. It's going to be a mess. There's traffic. Now, I'm going to have two ponds, or three ponds, that are within two hundred yards of my house. I might as well throw away my bird feeder and get a bug zapper, because it's silly. You're talking about green space. Why are we tearing down a hundred and twenty acres of forestry where animals, insects, bugs, trees, birds, whatever live, to this? I understand progress, but it's just, yeah, I don't know.
Were you, were you a member of the golf course?
No, I was not.
Well, that's, I think that's kind of the buyer beware. If you join a golf club that, if you join, if you, excuse me.
Ma'am, I moved down here in two thousand and eight, or I bought the property in two thousand and eight. I retired, and then I moved down here. Was I a member? It closed when I moved down here full-time, so no, I was not a member.
The ones that I've seen that have been able to maintain their golf courses, for the most part, are the ones where the homeowners are, have membership, or are required to be owners of the golf course.
Golf course? No, I mean, I didn't, I don't.
The most of the other ones, that's why they, you know, that's why they failed, unless they're really high-end clubs.
Well, that was, we're here today with the situation where you guys want to put in two hundred and fourteen houses, and only two streets that come on to Hudson Avenue, so that's going to be a traffic issue. And now I have, you say we're going to have a green space park or whatever. What do I, have to climb the fence or walk a mile and a half to go around to get to that park? I mean, for being right there? I mean, I don't get it. Some plastic cheesy fence that, like behind Bayonet Point Hospital. They tore all that ground out, what, two years ago? And here it sits, blank, you know, flat, nothing. So, I just, I don't know what to say. I'm just, it's discouraging. My value of my house is going to go down, market value. I came here to retire, and I don't, you guys probably already have your minds made up and deals made with Matt and whatever, so I just want to speak my two cents worth. And, yeah, I don't know.
Well, we're hearing you.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, is anyone else going to speak to this item after this lady? If you are, if you are, come up and line up behind her.
Okay.
So, if anyone else is going to speak that has not been sworn, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm V. Salerno, A three, fourth, Thoreau Place. I am also the treasurer of HOA, and friend of Jack there. I know you have a concern about the drainage, and I understand that the property that we are, that we, the gifted property that we want to take over is not under SWIFTMUD. However, I was also concerned about the drainage, so I contacted Mike Penn of the Florida Service Department, and he was in my house, and we went together in the golf cart, and we toured the whole area, of the area that we are concerned about. And he said it was, the trees were more of a help than they were a hindrance, especially in the low-lining areas by the stormwater drains, which I'm very close to one of them. And he said, no, he said that is not a problem, they're more of a help. So, I just thought that was important information, because I was concerned about that also.
Roots are good for rainwater.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Parks. I live at one three nine oh five Tommage Loop, Hudson, Florida.
You've been sworn?
He was, yes, he was.
Okay.
When I first moved down here, it was a golf course. After the golf course closed, it started growing weeds and stuff in there, and I decided to mow that lawn. I spent five thousand dollars on a lawnmower. I've been mowing part of one, two, and one, three, and four for the last three and a half years. And if we take this thing over, I've already decided to become the committee chairman for taking care of all the maintenance. I asked for volunteers. I got fifteen people that want to cut the grass out there. I think that's remarkable. And if I think if we blow this deal, I know for sure it's going to be terrible, because they're going to make that Hudson a commercial. It's going to be all kinds of businesses and stuff. You got to get, I mean, we're going to lose a great thing. Where are we going to get all this property for free? I just, it's a no-brainer. Let's work it out, get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one else signed up, so.
Nobody else signed up?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so, do we have to have a motion? Do we have to have a motion to send it back to the planning commission?
Yes.
Can we have more discussion, please?
No, they're saying by law, we have to. I was trying to find a way to not send it back. But we have to, right Barbara? I mean, we can't find a resolution today?
You can't talk from the audience, please. You have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, I was, I was trying to find pictures from that I took from a storm event that just showed all the water that goes in to those ponds that are there. And again, they're not ponds, but when it rains, they fill up. That's how it's designed to go, all the way through. And all I'm looking at is the pine trees that are in there. And frankly, I don't mind if we come back in later on through our tree mitigation fund and put other trees that are more acceptable in a low-lying area, cypress trees, whatever it may be.
We don't have anything to do with those trees. That's, they're, they're trees. Why would we do anything out there?
So, the MPUD that's going on has stormwater ponds the way it was designed. The reason he's not building on all this golf course that he's giving away, because there's not enough room. They're all designed so narrow, so tight, that you can't build. If you were out there, you'd see it through a golf, you'd know. Have you ever played it? Thanks? Anyway, so I don't have the pictures. But if you look at right here, this is a picture of a tree, just down at Fort Myers, as far as, there's a trench that's there, you got a big oak tree. Those things are all over the place. Doesn't matter.
Matt, why are you fighting what the residents and the developer and everyone wants?
Because I'm worried in twenty, thirty years.
That's their worry, that's not our worry. They can cut them down if they want. I don't know why you're, why you're getting all wrapped up in that.
Because in twenty, thirty years.
So, a tree falls down.
Would you let me finish, and I'll tell you?
I have to leave at five thirty. I have a daughter who's having her jaw replaced, so I'm going to have to get up and go here in a second.
Sorry for the inconvenience. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. It's only been five years I've been working on it, too. And thank you for a compliment to my assistant Sonia, because she's been involved with it, looking at this every step of the way. And Colleen was out there the first night, then we had a meeting out there to have everything shut down. So, I appreciate the trees. The trees are great. In the low areas, I'm worried when they grow, they're going to topple over a storm like this, and then who's going to have to pay for it? Who's going to have to take a tree down? Who's going to move the tree around? Does it become a forest hazard? That's my concern. And if we got to remand this.
No speaking from the audience, please.
If we've, if we've got to remand this anyway, what I suggest we do is add the condition in, let's have SWIFTMUD, the county staff, go look at, is it safe for long-term to have the pine trees where they're put? Got to go back anyway?
No speaking from the audience, sorry.
I just wanted to call the question. What's the parliamentary procedure? Because we, this is going to come back to us?
Have a motion, yes.
Well, okay.
We can call a question, we've got a motion in a second.
Well, how do, it's, is it endless debate? I mean, this is coming back to us.
Back to.
After it goes to the planning commission?
Yes. Mr. Pastor.
If they wish to add agriculture as a use to this project, it has to go back to the planning commission, and it's got to be re-advertized for that particular use. The appropriate motion in that case would be to remand it to the planning commission for further review.
So, what's the pleasure of the board?
So, either, so if we don't send it back to the planning commission, their whole deal may fall apart. Because Mr. Lohman is not going to be party to a deal where he gets something back, and what's he supposed to do with it? So, unless we agree, we're not going to go after him over any ag issues.
Coming forward, Barbara.
I don't understand why we can't just say that here now, but you say we didn't advertise it for that.
Yeah.
Commissioner, is the applicant's request to get remand to the planning commission? We have to. I went over every scenario. I appreciate the support. I'd love for it to be done today. I mean, you've heard the resident speak, so I think you'd be ready to vote, but I, as the applicant, need to ask for a remand.
I think so.
It's frustrating.
Okay, looking for a motion.
When you remand, I want to fix that mowing requirement, too.
Yes.
Move to remand with a full discussion about the mowing and stormwater issues in the trees, in the trees, and possibly greenbelt or not greenbelt.
No, that's not your call.
That's not our, okay, that's not our call, okay. Motion on the floor.
Okay, got a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye? All opposed, like so? Four oh, it passed to be remand back to the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I have one housekeeping item. Ms. Snyder handed out, and it's something on the dais, but she did not mention it, so I just want to make certain that this is okay to include in the record.
Oh, so we need a motion to receive and file?
Move to receive and file?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
Alright, we got one more item. I don't, where did I scroll?
We have the Starkey cell tower.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think they understand that's, that's how they get their concerns fixed, the residents.
R sixty-six. That's how it's called, R sixty-six. My Jack is fighting.
Well, it fixes their concerns.
Yeah.
I don't think they understand that, that's outrageous.
Let me look at my calendar.
Maybe Tammy's going to have a meeting. It's because of a legal advertising issue, is what you said.
Yeah. They never asked for it.
Hopefully, there's no one here with us. Go, I have to leave, so. I'm going to get a call here in a second.
So, this is R sixty-six, this is the lease.
Okay, I have, I've, I've got to have three members sitting here.
You do.
Okay.
He's coming back.
You've got, you've got three. Okay. Want me to go, Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Department, this is the lease for the cell tower at Starkey Ranch. And let me bring you up to speed on where we are. So, this is related to the P four agreement on, that we brought earlier this year, that the school district has already approved, what was going to be a agreement with a different carrier or a different provider. We went through several steps to get to that. Everything that's highlighted in green were the steps that were completed previously. We are now at this yellow step to make a decision on this new solicitation based on this alternative site to relocate it at the park.
Oh, this isn't the hearing?
The previous location would have allowed the sighting to be at approximately six hundred and twenty-five feet from the school. And the previous lease would have been with Vertex. The, just to highlight, the rent would have been one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per month with a two percent increase, or six hundred dollars a month per sublease. By going out and relocating this, we are now two thousand three hundred and forty-eight feet from the nearest school building, and one thousand and four hundred feet from the nearest housing location. So, we're much further away from the school. We're three point seven five times further away than previous.
Okay.
And this is, we will be locating it basically in the maintenance yard of the, of the Starkey Park there, and, and this is where it's going to be located. We have, just kind of, it's basically a twenty-foot sliver that we were able to utilize within the maintenance yard there. And by going out, this, with wireless edge, they were able to provide better rates, same term, twenty-seven-year lease, for additional five, five-year options. But the rent now is two thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars per month with a two point five percent annual increase, and a thousand dollars per month for, per sublease, plus a bonus of thirty-five thousand dollars for each sublease after the first sublease. So.
Is that to the county?
That's to, that, that will be to the P four shared use.
Oh, we share with the school, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So, with that, that's where we are with the new lease, and we recommend approval.
Anybody sign up?
There's no one to sign up for this.
This is not a public item, this is just regular.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it's an R.
We went back to regular.
Move approval. And, but which, which design are we doing?
We're doing a monopole, which will be just, it'll be, it's a stealth pole, is what we've done. None of the antennas will be on the outside, it'll just be a singular.
See, before, they were saying they couldn't, but some of those companies say they have new technology, and they can put them in a stealth pole. So, we've approved some without, and they said, no, no, it has to be on the outside, it heats up. But I've been, done some research, and they, see, don't let, okay, staff, we're not going to do those other ones anymore where the arrays are on the outside. So, good job.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second discussion?
Okay, we got a motion, second and discussion.
Yeah, it's great to see that no one's here compared to what we had before, when we had sixteen hundred signatures. So, I give staff credit and the providers credit for working with us. To me was, should have been a lot quicker and easier, but at least.
Provider lost the contract.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We did.
Yeah. We got a better deal than the school district had.
We got a better deal.
Sorry for that provider for not listening earlier. Could have been better for them. But, but.
It's all good.
The location, I think, is, as one of the residents said, is as good as we're going to get, so they're at peace with it, I'm at peace with it.
Yeah, I've got not one email of complaint or anything.
Good job, Commissioner Starkey.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so? Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Appreciate all the staff and the county's attorney and officers.
That ends that part of the meeting, but then we have our old business.
I'll wait.
Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. I used my local time earlier today.
All right, well, I have, I have a list, because I didn't go last time, so. First, and I think Jack has brought this up before, I was at, well, do you have a photo thing for me? I don't know what, maybe I'll go by the photo order. Well, while you're teeing that up, I learned this, when there is a court-ordered eviction, the property owner is putting their belongings and trash in the right-of-way. They're being instructed to do this, and then code compliance gets called for, for trash, and then Public Works has to come and clean it up. So this is being paid for by the taxpayers. I don't have a photo of this, but we need to have some kind of procedure that is, when there's an eviction, the cost goes on the property owner and not on the, on the county to clean up whatever their tenant has left behind. All right?
Why wouldn't it be illegal dumping? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we go after them for, under a violation of section four oh three?
Ask our code people. We, we go and have Public Works go clean it up.
So I have a lot of experience with this.
Okay.
Lot. Not in Pasco, I'll say in northeast Florida. And during certain months, move-ins and move-outs with renters, people can't afford to pay the rents, landlord evicts them, and it's full households of people's belongings at the curb. And there's this constant battle of who, who picks it up? Who pays for it? Is a holler eat the cost? Is there funds, grant funding out there to pay for it? And the solution to that was with these, these rentals and these move-in and moves-out, the onus of that needs to be on the landlord.
Yeah.
And that landlord can factor that potential risk into their rates and into their deposits. And that's the easiest and cleanest solution, and you know how to come after them to get it cleaned up. So that's.
So we need to fix ours.
Be done.
Okay?
Commissioner Wigg, can you, can you, Mr. Chairman, if I could, so can you send us what those other areas have done?
Yeah, so that's up in city of Jacksonville.
All right.
Solid waste.
That was an easy one.
Are y'all done?
Uh, no. Okay, I'll go on to the second one. So we had a, an incident at one of our parks where a child was, I think it was at Starkey, actually. A child was kicked in the chest with a ball, you know, a ball hit them, and they had a heart stoppage, and there was, there, there was no access to the AED. So we need to be looking at what's going on at our parks with AEDs.
And most of our parks do have AEDs at their concession areas, but in this particular instance, you know, we'll, we'll continue to look in and make sure that we were getting them there, all parks.
Yeah.
I think it's also just a matter of knowing where they are.
Yeah. And making sure they're accessible if there isn't a park employee there. And I don't, I don't know, you know, that's scary, because then you could have vandals doing something, but I don't know. I don't know how that works, but parents have come to me about that. So Jack, this was your rotary. You weren't, you weren't there that day, but the, the Newport Ritchie Rotary, Rotary Club has gone all in on our international economic development efforts and just our international relationships. And up here on the left is the CEO of Miopta, and why do I always forget his name? He's, the, Miopta's a Czechoslovakian company, but he's German, and his name is escaping me right now, and he's part of my International Economic Development Council here in the county. And he went to Gemmerheim, which, if you remember, they're our sister city-county, or friendship county or whatever, and visited their rotary, and their rotary came and visited the Newport Ritchie Rotary a couple weeks ago, and we have two students who have come from Gemmerheim and are interning in the county. And one of those gentlemen is at our animal facilities, and the other one actually is interning with, with him at Miopta. And we, we want to continue this opportunity and strengthen it. River Ridge used to send German students over to, to Gemmerheim, and Gemmerheim sent students here, but River Ridge has discontinued their German program, so there are, there is no German program anymore in the county. But Newport Ritchie Rotary is picking up on this, so we, I just, they invited me to the presentation, I think it's wonderful, and I think we should keep up these international relationships and build more, and send, and we're going to send some of our students over there, and they're going to work in, in the businesses in Gemmerheim, and they're going to send more here. So we're going to hear more about that.
Is it Reinhardt?
Yeah, Reinhardt. Reinhardt. So, okay, what's next?
And then, Commissioner Starkey, I'm a big fan of that.
Yeah, no, it's great.
I think we need to go.
Yeah, and we need, we need to expand that to other places. So I was just at the NACO Board of Directors meeting in Minneapolis, and I know I was sending Mike and David Engel lots of pictures from the different meetings that I attended. We did a field trip to Three M, and, which was, is an amazing company, I had no idea, Minnesota mining and manufacturing, that's what Three M stands for. They have, well, they've used a lot of their ARPA money, and they, they're doing a lot of pilot programs for youngsters, getting them career-minded. And Brookings Institute actually has partnered with them, and they have a permanent, they have someone there for a couple years from Brookings, working on them with this. I have a lot more of these slides, but they have really taken kind of what we've done with our utility program with NAM skills, where we do the boot camp, and then the students go and work for a number of weeks in the summer and get paid. They've kind of blown that up into all the different departments, so I have some information on that, and I'll be meeting with staff on, you know, how we can work with our youth and get them to be looking at what it's like to have these municipal county jobs and help train our workforce. And they also have something called the, I don't know, it's Driver Academy, and apparently in our high schools, that kids don't take drivers ed anymore.
It's online.
Yeah, it's online. I don't know how you learn to drive a car online, but in, in Hennepin County, this county, they decided that's one of the big, biggest impediments to some of their youth getting good jobs, was no access to a driver's license, or, and so they've come up with this Driver's License Academy and partnered with, it's kind of a public-private partnership, and I'm going to, I'm going to bring that to, to you guys, too, and they, they've been getting students, and, and they use a county car to take the driver's license test, and they get their driver's license, and then they can go get jobs where they can drive, and maybe they're driving the company car. So it's helped a lot of kids get, get cars. Okay, what else do I have in there? Is that it? Okay, that's, so that's, that's what I did on the, I already did the MPUD one that I wanted to do. Yeah, so that's it for me, I guess. Oh, no, Freebie. I want to continue this discussion of these micro-transit programs that are out there. And this, I got, I picked these up at the fact meeting, and the, more and more counties and cities across the state are doing these micro-transit programs. We started it with David Engel, then the guy who was running our transit killed his program, when we could have had a, a grant from Ford, and took it and never did anything with it. So I really, really want us to be looking at, you can see some of the logos on, on the back here. Pass those down. But what it is, is in a certain geographical area, for free, you just have the app, you just call up the car, and it'll come and take you anywhere within that geographical area. And I think they said it costs thirty-five dollars an hour. So what that can do for families and, and kids needing to get somewhere is tremendous. And it's a, a really good service, and I want to continue that one.
Are you done?
Yep, I am now done.
That's a good thing, because we're getting closer to five thirty.
Yeah.
You got twenty-seven minutes?
But the rest of them still got to go.
Yep. I may or may not be here to listen to her. Okay, I'm done.
Sonya's got some pictures for me?
I got some of the wives' votes, we need at least have three here.
Okay.
You don't sound confident, Sonya. Ooh, Ariana.
Yeah, she's got some pictures, I just wanted to do.
He's pulling up a video. A video?
Oh, wait, I have this.
Oh, you got to sit with this video. Wait a minute.
I have this, this, this.
This is at Lake Lisa Park.
Oh, is this the groundbreaking?
This is, this is, this is, no, exactly the groundbreaking. This is Marcy with her.
Oh, yeah, and you sit down here.
Really going to see what goes on.
And this thing swings.
Oh, wow.
We, 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 we.
This is like the one we did at Wesley, Wesley Chapel.
Yes.
Yeah. We used, we, you know, I helped put one in in Newport Ritchie, but they took it out at the Sims Park with all childrens.
It used to be different one time.
This is what it's like to be in an earthquake, Alana. Earthquake.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's good.
Likes it, though. Yeah. You want more? You want more?
And there aren't very many options if you don't have this kind of equipment, there's like zero. Yep, we had those swings at Sims Park.
How you doing, boo?
Marcy would tell the story when she did the groundbreaking, that she would always sit in the chair and just watch everyone else play and not get to play herself.
Yeah.
So what that did for her and that family is going to be great, all the families around, so. Right. I think, I think if Marcy comes in with a few more of these projects, you're going to know why.
Yeah.
So look for them.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Got a couple more pictures. We had opened, we did the opening of the senior games. I'm not sure what's coming up next. Oh, that's just Hudson Beach. That was another option which you could use for two million dollars. But we were going to grant for that.
Maybe we'll get a grant.
This is a sign that was in my office for about.
Yeah.
Six months, so they put it up the other day on FDOT, so thank you FDOT for working with us to get it done.
Oh, is that why FDOT was in my parking space?
There you go.
Yeah. They said they were picking up the sign.
So as much as I thought I would have now room in my office, I think you also would call into with all the rum cakes, so.
Yeah.
I don't quite have to have my, my space back. This is a project, we've all seen it, asphalt paving systems and spray-jack technology. We've seen results on it. DOT is working on it. Branford's working with DOT right now. In the bid that we put out, we have an extra, we have a line in there for emulsion, and that's the only extra charge there is. To do the Bruce B. Downs project, that's a mile long, I really want you guys to hear me. It's a mile long, six lanes, the only extra cost is ninety-two hundred dollars. Now picture, you're going to get a tack that goes down without trucks driving over it. When the seams go to connect these lanes together, they get sealed as well. So for ninety-two hundred dollars, Secretary of DOT, I think Justin, told me they're willing to go give it a trial run to see how this works. We've done the numbers, our coefficients have worked, to show that it works as a better, better bond. So I don't, Branford, if you need a motion, as I told you, I was going to bring this forward to the board, to spend the ninety-two hundred dollars? Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to put a motion that we use on the Bruce B. Downs project, to use the extra emulsion at ninety, up to ten grand, I'll just say, because I think it's ninety-two or ninety-four, to do that technology on that project.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much, and I hope, hope we'll get a chance to go see what it's done. Thank you.
Can I get some?
Florida senior games open.
So I was just going to ask for some clarification. This is an FDOT job, and we're contributing ten thousand dollars to this, or?
I think it's ours. This is, this is ours. Yeah, we're going to do it in December, we pushed it to January, so now they can get it done in time. Okay. So we did the Florida senior games opening at the Sarah Vanderberg Tennis Center. Great turnout. We had a great kickoff, the weather was perfect, there's a nice picture of all the people there. We even had the Secretary of Elder Affairs come down, Anne Marie Winters, you see, she's there as well, and some of our participants, and then Todd Vanderberg there and Steve Simon as well, Adam Thomas was there and his team, but did a great job kicking off, and it's rolling right now. You know what the number one sport is for us?
Pickleball.
Pickleball?
Big time. Pickleball, so. And what I found out was, one lady that was there came up to me afterward, she goes, you know, you're just the person I want to talk to, because we don't do senior games here like they do in Pinellas County and all over the state. We need to do our own senior games going through. So I want to get Parks and Rec to work with tourism to kind of go through it and see if we can make those games happen, and I'm going to have to work with them on that. All right. That was Town and Country Villas. Just kind of show you, those, those are, just so you know, those are, on the left side of the screen, to clarify for you, the seven homes that are on the left side, those are all built, raised up. The properties to the side, they're in the blue, that are all contiguous parts, et cetera, and side by side. When you raise those properties up, you can only go so high depending what's next to it. If you get more properties beside it, you can do more. So depending on what comes in, I think the next, next slide is going to show you to the other side of Van Duren. Now, the gentleman, the company that bought all these other land properties together here, he's got a much better plant, chance where he's got eight properties, nine properties all together, to raise them up even higher and have him pitch a little bit. So I'm going to say that I would love to see staff go take a look at the dirt we had at Timber Oaks that we brought down there, cut the cost down, and start looking at, okay, where can we go put this? Do we want to go put this? I think everybody would accept it, but that dirt that we used in the first seven lots that are over there, especially in the, through in the backside of Van Duren, they couldn't build it until we put that fill in. Same thing's going to happen with these here, and the cheaper we make it, the better, especially cutting our cost down, and they may even be able to use that fill if they're going to raise those sewer lines up, as said, all, all down Leisure Lane and Van Duren is, is running the water and sewer. Could save us a whole bunch of money.
But those properties I see in red, is that the ones you're going to raise lots?
Those are the ones that we used to own. Habitat wanted to give us back to us, and now this company called Kira, Kaya, who I don't know who they are, we looked at them a little bit, but I don't know who they are yet, but they bought those properties there. So they're going to do something. It may be good for them to even like, take a bigger hand in.
All right, those, those are the properties there above those, you know, square, red squares. Are they going to be lower than these properties here?
They're, they're, they're all pretty much, right now, they're all, they're all the same level.
But any, anyone that puts out, gets a building permit for a house on there has to have it raised to the new FEMA flood levels.
Yeah, when they, when they build up, yes, those, those are vacant lots right now.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So they're all vacant lots, all been played out.
Those, those others got houses on them.
They have houses on them.
Have they already been raised up?
No, they haven't.
No.
If you raise these others up, that's going to create a problem.
That's why I'm saying this is a comprehensive plan, we need to put the whole thing through. That's why I was trying to get that done to get them.
Yeah.
So again, I think we should go take a look, if we could, Mike, let's go study what the Timber Oaks project was. There's areas where they were able to take fill, I think it's on record.
Okay.
And then we can just be ready to like, how much quantity we think is there, because as they were going to sell that dirt, it was supposed to drive their cost down, the market at that time, it didn't let them sell all the dirt, so they just covered it over. So there's good quality dirt that we could use.
Wow. It's always good to have dirt.
All right. Is that all you have? Is that all you have? Okay.
That's all you got?
So let me just say one thing. So I was trying to like, that last hearing with the links, again, I, I'm hearing changes, I'm seeing changes, and then I'm trying to like, get answers, and I wasn't getting them today.
Right.
So what I found out, as I was walking to the back, I was telling, I was going to talk to a lady at the Fairway Oaks, that I want to get with the board as quick as possible. They got a meeting coming up on Tuesday where they elect the new board members, but I want to get with them, get with the people, to go find out what's, you know, what the issue is. Because I think if they're willing to cut the trees out, and if that was their holdup, which I think it was, but I don't know, I think we can put this thing forward in a good way for everybody. So I'm going to meet with them as quick as I can, I think it's Tuesday they're going to go, so I'll go after the board meeting, we'll talk, and this way here, I'll have all the people there, too, so we can talk about it. But the developer told me at, at the back of the room, he's willing to take them out, so there's no issue. So I'll try to meet with the others, too, talk it through, maybe if I could get the stormwater crew, Roy, let's go out there, I want to go out there with them, let's go look at it, talk about it. I'll find those pictures that I've taken before, because I've taken them several times, but we'll go out there, let's go look at it, talk about it, and then we can talk to the people. And again, if it means, frankly, that we got to take those trees out, but want to go
necessary documents with county attorney office review in concurrence, of course, to resume construction. So, specifically, I am requesting a motion to delegate authority to the county administrator to negotiate and sign a tender and release agreement with the previous contractor's bonding company, Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company, to include payment to the county of the additional money needed for the completion of the station of approximately $2 million, and a release of county claims against the bonding company, including against the performance bond, and to delegate authority to the county administrator to sign a standard county construction agreement with Blackwater Construction Services LLC, with special terms as needed to complete the construction of Fire Station 17 in the amount not to exceed $4 million.
So, move. Mr. White?
This could be fun.
Catherine? Second. He's causing a problem down there. All right, I got a motion. Second. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Your ball is eyes got that big.
Motion passed.
They're staying at the pool. I have no idea that the end is just rather than the college. I think it's brilliant.
They're having a good time. I think Mr. Baxter's eyes were lighting up bigger than mine, Commissioner Wade. I'm good, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Steinster?
I don't have anything for you. Thank you.
You got to start doing more.
Okay.
You could have brought us any kind of project right now, so...
I'd like to have a litigation assessment meeting for January.
I have one quick item. David, which stands for the Driver and Vehicle Information Database, is administered by DHSMV. Users are granted access to use the system through an MOU, and that MOU requires an attestation statement from the Inspector General every three years to ensure compliance with the MOU. The attestation has been filed. It was on this agenda as noted, Item 108. But in summary, just so the board is aware, improvements to internal controls were needed, but the Stormwater Team made the needed corrections and enacted measures to prevent recurrence, and that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, you see, one item I got right here in front of us on the camera there, so that item is the, we celebrated the groundbreaking of Hercules Park, construction to, expected to take about a year, so in December '24, we will see the end of that, and I have a ribbon-cutting. It's going to be a splash park and park benches and things of this nature, tables and all where people can come and enjoy. Sits right in behind Culver's and right up next to the property that's Woodland Elementary. So, but it's going to be a very nice park for the city of Zephyr Hills. Another thing, I had mentioned to y'all before, Jim McBride had retired from the VAB, and so if you have anyone for the Value Adjustment Board, please reach out to my office and let me know so we can fill that position. Now, I'm needing, and I don't know if I need it from the BOCC or if I need it from the MPO, but I need a letter written to support the appropriation project to widen US 41 north of 52 to the county line. And I've been asked that by Mr. Edwards, Edward Briggs. Briggs, yeah. He had asked me for a letter. I can do it under the board.
I just have to do it for the board, and we'll bring it to the MPO as well.
And we do both?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, I need a motion. I got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. All right, next is, I went to Woodland on November 15th, participated in the All-American Teach-In. I had 10 classes that day. One of them was a little above my capabilities because it was pre-K. They're tough, that pre-K stuff. But my daughter teaches that class, so I had to go there, but then I went into the library system area there for the school, Woodland, and they brought three classes in three different times. They had nine classes I spoke to that day. So, thank goodness for some of the teachers there, because they ask some of the questions that kids of 9, 10, 11, and 12 don't seem to ask. So, turned out pretty good, and a good time with those kids. Let's see. All right, then Saturday, I had a great time at the Zephyr Hills Festival of Lights Parade. That's this past Saturday. Last from 7, I think I got home about 10 o'clock at night, so it was a parade. Jack, you've been to a parade there before, haven't you?
Yes.
In Zephyr Hills? This parade started like normal, went on down and where they turn right to go back up by the courthouse, the city courthouse there. When you turn, there was, gosh, I don't know how deep they were, there were probably 10 yards on both sides of the road, and even after the turn, it carried another two or three blocks of people on both sides of the road. Used to, there'd only be a few of them. Actually, make that turn, there wouldn't be but a few there. But tremendous outcome of people looking for good things and happy things to do here in the county. So, I think if you can, reach out to some of these parades and all during Christmas is a good thing, so. I think citizens look forward to seeing you out there.
Yeah. I would say we need to get with the people that run that parade, as well as Chasco and the Christmas parade, because I think there's a need for more barricades with more people here, more expansive. Angel Cook had to go down.
Zephyr Hills had more barricades.
Yeah, okay. I'm just saying.
They did. They had to, so...
Right, so I know they had to borrow, I think, 800 from the city of Tampa.
Yeah.
And it was, they had to get them loaded to get them up here, they got them unloaded by the jail folks, the goodies.
Uh huh.
But I think it's probably time that we look at TDC again, to go, got to go buy some more. I think the city, Newport Ritchie, is actually willing to store them for the side, and if we get some of the store for the other side. It's a little tricky, because I guess, you know, it didn't always happen, sometimes, most of the time it does. They schedule the same day for the parade for Christmas.
Right.
It'd be good if we could maybe persuade them to shift it.
Well, I can tell you today, I don't know where else they're having one, but Dade City on, their parade is on Friday, and then the Christmas Stroll is on Saturday. So, I believe they're having a parade both times, so...
I heard there was a concept, but I guess it wasn't. I didn't frankly get words on either one of them, so...
Yeah, you might could reach out to Troy, he's going to have a truck in there, so...
Yep, yep, yep.
Mr. Chairman, just one...
You call it something?
Well, one housekeeping matter, because it dawns on me that this happens every year.
Okay.
The chair's appointments will be the same as the outgoing's chair's appointments until you get to do them in January.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
I'm prepared.
Because we've had issues where in, there's a meeting in the end of December, and everybody's going, "Well, I don't know whether I'm supposed to go or not."
But I'm going to...
I just want to make sure that Commissioner Mariano's appointments stay until you replace them.
Oh, yes, right.
In January.
They all stay until I replace them, and I will replace them earlier rather than later, so...
Okay.
Okay? All right, with that, any other news? Bless you. All right, adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everybody.